I would like to call to order this work session of the Forest Grove City Council. The topic is downtown improvements. There will be no public comment taken and the council will take no formal action. And now I would like, oh, for the record, I would like to acknowledge that all city councillors are present and accounted for, and I would like to turn it over to our community development director, Mr. Brian Poehl. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council and mayor. Brian Poehl, we developed development director in front of you about downtown improvements. We're going to call this Trees and Trash, but a bit more professional and call it Downtown Improvements. So, next slide, please. Okay, we're going to be talking about tree removal and replanting. We did a thorough inventory of all the trees and the sort of what we call the CDBG area and their status. Sidewalk and brick repair, those trees have caused a lot of sidewalk and brick uplift issues. Talking about tree lighting, waste enclosure replacement, some of those trash cans. It helps some discussion. Next slide, please. The purpose of tonight's work session is to reach consensus on possible improvements in the Community Development Block Grant Downtown Enhancement Area. Easy way to think about this is sort of anywhere where you see sidewalk, bricks, curb. That's, that's all sort of the CDBG area. And that was just sort of a grant that was awarded to us, I don't know, almost 20 years ago, I believe, to do some beautification in the downtown, and so that, the remnants of that are sort of what you're seeing today. So we hit that 20-year mark and we're kind of dealing with some of the issues that were not addressed at that point. So, we held a work session on June 24th and reviewed the Community Forest Recommission recommendations. They reached consensus on downtown, downtown tree removal and replacement. Tree removal, further investigating lighting options, purpose potential, proposal potential art locations, proposing potential trash receptacle replacements. Next slide, please. So this big, busy map, I think, is actually a really cool map that kind of helps you kind of see where we're talking about. This is all of the street trees downtown in the CDBG area. And you'll see the overwhelming majority are in that green right there. That means that they're fine, they're doing well. If the structure around them at this point is not harmed, and they're not recommended for any action. The ones in yellow, you're seeing some minor issues, some minor brick uplift. No, no big safety issues. You can just see where, where things are headed, I guess. And they could be, become major issues in the next five, 10 years. Moderate could be some, some danger present, but to be mitigated. We were removing grates and things like that, but will be a bigger issue soon. Then, of course, we also have the severe areas where, or the severe trees where there's definitely a clear and present danger impact that's sort of associated with those trees. If any of you are interested in the whole sort of spreadsheet, I got pictures of every single one of them. I can send it to you offline.
Sorry, I'm going to interrupt. I thought that on Main Street by Theater in the Grove, there was, where is that on, like, on this map? Because I don't see, I had reached out to Jesse because I'd gotten some public comment from Theater in the Grove. And he had told me it was severe, it was going to be addressed on this, but it doesn't look like it's red on this map. And so it looks like right by 37? Is that Theater in the Grove?
I believe so.
Number 37, so that's what I'm just really concerned, I mean, I just want to double check the map that it's accurate, or that we are. I was told that that was severe tree and it was going to be addressed in this improvement plan. But on this map, it doesn't look like it's a, it's labeled severe. So I just want to bring that to staff's attention.
And is it the tree maybe, or just the grating? Because I know the grate's really bad. I've walked by their.
Yeah, I don't, it's like the tree and the grating.
We'll take another look at it, and it might be on the next slide as well. So when we get to the actual trees.
Sorry to, sorry to interrupt, Brian.
Here's where you can see where we've noted all of the red, orange, and yellow. Like 37, isn't that yellow that the, there could be repairs made and monitored. But obviously, we can recheck that and ground truth that part as well, just to be sure. Next slide.
So can I make one just brief comment, if I may? If you go back one slide, I think one of the policy considerations is we try to take the kind of three different levels, if you will, kind of the yellow, orange, red. The reality is, is when we get to do a construction project, if we get out there and, and there's something else associated with that particular tree, or that particular grate, or there's some kind of things that we can't see underneath, potentially, yellow trees and/or orange trees may also come out. It's not just limited necessarily to the red trees. Those are just the ones that are the most severe right now. And so I think as part of an overall project, when we're looking at this, there's going to be some discretion, if you will, in the field between the yellow, the orange, and the red, because we haven't been able to do, you know, like, look underneath the trees and see if there's infrastructure underneath, a water pipe, a water meter, those kinds of things. So, but these are the trees that kind of goes to the list of needing some attention, whether you remove the grate and repair the roots and put, or whether you remove the tree, those kinds of things. So I'll just add that for additional comment.
So in summary, we would remove between 12 and 16 trees and replant 20 to 24 trees. And just a note there that some trees have already been removed and replaced in the project. That's why you see the numbers. We would certainly use varieties that require less maintenance. The approximate cost to remove and replace trees, including the sidewalk and brick repairs, removing all the grates and replacing the p-gravel will be about $138,000. Two areas that we focused on, Area 1, Main and 21st from College to the alley. That estimated cost there is $190,000, $198,000. And Area 2, from the 21st Alley to A Street, will be about $39,750. There are also some other options here. 21st from College to Main for $48,000, and Main from 21st to Pacific for $111,000. That's for the lighting, sorry.
Can we, can we go back one slide? I'm sorry. If I could just maybe add to what Brian mentioned. This is to, as I understand it, to put basically an outlet at every tree that you would see in that green area, or whatever area it would be. So it's not to do overhead lighting across the street, it's to put an outlet there. It actually doesn't include, I don't believe, the cost of the lights themselves. I think this is just to do the, like, the electrical conduits and the outlets, the outdoor outlets for all of the trees within that green area.
What kind of lighting are we talking about?
So the typical kind of lighting that you see are the ones that wrap around the tree branches. They light up at night, and, and they stay on during the night and then go off during the day. Brian, I don't know if you want to add anything more to that.
Yeah, no, I think that conversation is probably an open conversation as well, as far as, you know, what we want to be seeing there. The, I mean, the thing is that right now, without electricity, we're kind of precluded from having any lighting, you know? And that's the cost of the electricity that would enable lighting down there.
So would you categorize it more as decorative, or?
Absolutely, yes.
So it really doesn't add to the street lighting for safety or traffic?
It certainly would and probably could, or I'm sorry, certainly could and probably would, but that wouldn't be the overarching sort of purpose behind it. Certainly more decorative and beautification is safety sort of thing, but it has those spillover benefits.
Councillor Ewing has a question too. Go ahead, Councillor Ewing.
Brian, so when you've reviewed this, we've reviewed a potential light gathering rather than just electric, or is that what these lights would be? Is that they gather energy from the sun? What, what is the thinking on that? Because that's a lot of money for decorative, in my opinion.
I'm not, I'm not sure what you mean by, by light gathering.
Solar, are they going to be solar, Brian, so that they can gather up energy for the evening? In lights?
I don't know if those decisions have been made at this point. I think that, I think that there would be some openness to discuss those things. They could be solar, but they, even solar can only last for so long throughout the night. They'll only do so much, and so, you know, this is really to get the power to the trees to allow lighting to happen.
So this does not include, this does not give us what the estimated annual cost for the electricity would be?
It does though.
I, I have it. So on, on slide six, you have $138,000. That, that would be a cost of removing and replacing trees. My question is, and it's, does this, does this include the, the trees that have like a yellow dot? The areas with the yellow dot that are considered not to be unsafe at the moment, but they could become in five to 10 years, or is it just for the red?
It's just for the red, I believe. That's what it was costed, I'm not sure. Greg Robertson's in the room, I'm not sure if you can comment on that or not.
Thank you.
Good evening, councillor. The answer to your question is, for the purpose of the calculation that I did for estimating, I included both the red and the orange in my estimate. I went and walked it one more time after this was prepared, and my assessment was that they would likely need to come out with this project.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
So also, as a potential part of this project as well, we would talk about replacing the trash cans. A total of 20 of them that we identified for replacement. Really the purpose being to improve the aesthetics, to have one sort of cohesive model for all the trash cans or waste enclosures. This would also increase capacity downtown as well, and would also help with the efficiency of collection. The product would be a 48-gallon roll cart waste enclosure, front-loaded, rounded top, green panels, brown frame, waste below the opening, and the Forest Grove oak leaves beside. The price for 25 cans delivered is $42,037. This is a picture of what that would look like. Again, a 48 capacity, 48-gallon capacity, it's again, roll cart compatible. You're looking at basically everything that we just talked about, and that's, you know, sort of the mock-up and lacks the Forest Grove leaves that we would be adding that as well. So picture that in your head, if you will.
Councillor Martinez has a question.
So the opening would face the street?
Opening would face the sidewalk.
Oh, face the sidewalk, okay.
If, if I may, Mayor?
Yep, go for it.
I think the, the mention of it increases capacity, I believe the existing capacity of the waste enclosures are 32 gallons. And these would be 48 gallons, which represents a pretty sizable increase in capacity. If you multiply that over, I think, 26 enclosures, it's about a, a good third of an increase in capacity that you would see over what we have right now. So, pretty sizable increase.
I had a question. I wasn't sure if you already, if you already mentioned it. Are these waste containers, are they so that nobody can just go in and pull the garbage can out whenever they feel like?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think they're customizable to be able to do that, and they would be from waste. We, we've been working with waste management on this. These are much easier to empty than the existing ones are. And so it would be for hopefully easier, quicker cleanup than you would see now.
Councillor President Rippey.
Brian, can you remind me again who would be responsible for gathering the trash?
Responsible for gathering trash? I don't, who the contract, we have the city.
Waste Management.
Waste Management does it on a weekly basis?
They've, they've increased the frequency during the summer for the downtown area. They've doubled it from what it was before. I don't remember the exact frequency, but I know it's twice what it used to be. I think it is once a week during the summer, and then it's once every other week, I believe, during the winter.
Thank you.
Councillor Martinez.
So I know walking downtown after the farmer's market on Wednesday nights, they're overflowing already. So I'm wondering if that's even going to be large enough?
Well, it is, it is increasing capacity. It's along the lines of 20%, I think we said, increasing capacity.
So there's two types of, not to get too far into this, but there's two types. There's one that are temporary waste enclosures that have the cardboard boxes with the bags that are supposed to be kind of event-specific. And then these are supposed to be kind of for just everyday, non-event use, just kind of regular transient travel, if you will. I think if you, there's a, there's different sizes. We tried to pick the one that was bigger in capacity, but not so big. It began to impugn on travel for the sidewalk or other features, or otherwise kind of stuck out, you know? This is kind of the largest one that you can get that's in an individual position like this. Otherwise, you start getting into the larger ones that are, that have fences around them and so on and so forth. I don't know if that answers your question, councillor, but.
Well, I think one thing this also might do is that, you know, ordering these all at once from the same company and have a uniform sort of look, I mean, it also kind of allows us to add more on as we sort of monitor through time. That, you know, this is not working over here, but need more over here. This is, this is replicatable more easily than what we currently have, which is not all the same.
On, on the garbage cans and this kind of reflects what you were saying about the farmer's market. There's going to be a, an email that goes out to other organizations that have events, including Adelante's and Chamber, any, any of us that are having events downtown with some suggestions that, that we have found work for, for this. Because there's the popular garbage cans, and, and so besides putting the temporary waste receptacles, like Jesse was talking about during events, not just putting those in the street for the event, but putting the, putting one also next to the city garbage can, that's a popular spot. And then I'm thinking, if, if this isn't going to be enough for those popular, there's, there's definite popular, popular garbage spot. Then maybe we can, you know, for instance, by UCC, it's always overflowing. Maybe that spot ends up with two, two, if, if that is something we can do.
Next slide. And so with all these costs, I mean, there, there are a lot of potential funding sources. TLT Capital, those are for tourist facilities, you know, capital stuff that you buy for tourist facilities. There's URA, we have the Street Light Fund, the Street Tree Fund, and the Street Fund. We have three different street kinds of funds. So those are all potential funding sources at this point. Next slide. So our next steps really are to reach, reach consensus on potential improvements. Do some outreach to business owners. We probably really want to kind of let everybody know what's going on, what to expect. Identify and approve the budget, and bid and construct the project. And so you'll see the timeline there. Next slide. So for summary, if you look at all these sort of different facets of the project, you're looking at a total of about $370,837. Next slide. These are our discussion items, is do we have a consensus on tree removal and replacement? What option, if any, does the council prefer regarding lighting? If revenues aren't sufficient for the preferred option, what section is the most important? And is there a consensus on the waste enclosures? And does the timeline work for you all? And we'll probably be up there, I think that's the last slide right there.
That's the last slide.
For discussion.
Okay, let's go item, one item at a time. So the first discussion item, is there consensus on tree removal and replacement? So are there any thoughts about?
Absolutely, it's a safety.
My, I guess my concern, or my question is, I just want to be clear, because I was trying to follow Greg's answer. But the trees that are yellow, you know, tagged yellow, that have concerns but aren't severe, and they're not part of this project.
They are not embedded in this.
And I'm just wondering, I mean, how, like, I guess I have two concerns, is that are some people, business, business owners going to feel like, you know, hey, these are an issue for me as well, and then why aren't we just doing it all? And then do, can we create, if it's a budget issue, can we at least create a timeline of when we're going to address those other trees? I think those are my main concern, is kind of that staggered approach, and what is our long-term plan for those other trees? Councillor Ewing.
Yes, thank you. I do recall that when we began this discussion a while back, that UCC had a grave concern about the trees that were on their frontage. But on the street side, they felt that they had an undue burden of trees that needed to be maintained and that were really costing them. Did we do any further discussion or looking into their concern? Thanks.
I can say that the, there are a number of the trees that run along their site. Also on their sort of eastern frontage, there are four trees there that are all pretty severe, and they're reflected in that list. I believe that is the 30 through 33 right there. And then there's also the one on the western frontage on Main that's also sort of severe. So we would be removing and replacing five of their trees. And I believe they also have one moderate up there. 182, I think it is, up there.
Jesse.
So if I could maybe address your, your earlier question, Mayor, and also maybe at the same time, address Elena's question. I think what we wanted to do was just get a general pulse from the council about kind of the overall tree removal. What we can do when we bid this, is we can bid this as what's called an additive alternate. So we could say that at a minimum, you need to take out the orange and the red. And also, we can require an arborist to be present during this to make sure that their recommendations align with ours. But then we could also have the alternate to look at the yellow. And if the yellow is, I think the, the intent behind the yellow was to say, something's going to need to be done at a minimum within five to 10 years. Now, some of those trees are going to be more severe than others. So we could do an additive alternate to have somebody come out, look at those, see what the damage is, and then make that part of the bid estimate as well. So there's a lot of discretion on how we approach this. I think we were just trying to get a sense of the council of, if you're okay with us to kind of move forward, and if so, we can certainly look at adding some of the yellow trees as part of that initial bid package. There's nothing, absolutely.
I'm happy with looking at that alternative, because we, all of those that own trees know that there's things that happen underneath that you're not always aware of. So I would be happier to have it a little bit more flexible like that, Jesse, so that if during their search, they say, hey, this tree really has elevated after we've gotten a chance to look at it. I think that gives us a lot more flexibility, and I think it will be a little bit more accurate on our bidding process as well. Thank you.
Councillor President Rippey.
Thank you. I'm, I'm in support of this project with, with regard to the trees. I'm concerned about the safety issues. Even if you look at the yellow ones, they talk about brick uplift. My concern is for people that have disabilities or mobility issues. If the uplift of the bricks or the sidewalk is more than a half an inch, I believe that's what ADA requires. Those sidewalks need to be fixed, and they need to be fixed as quickly as possible. I don't, you know, if, if we can't fix them, yes, we should have a plan and a timeline. In my opinion, I'd rather take the $190,000 for decorative lighting and put it toward fixing the safety issues around all of the trees that have been identified with sidewalk problems for the sake of those with disabilities and mobility issues. I, you know, it's my opinion, but I don't think $190,000 for lighting is, is worth foregoing some safety issues.
Wait, wait, wait. Councillor Gustafson, and then.
I agree with Councillor Rippey. The, if, if we hold our, you know, construction workers accountable for having the plates with the more than half inch, we, we have to be responsible for this as well. And it, it's definitely a safety issue. A lot of people, they just can't lift their feet up enough to pass those, those one-inch lift. And so I think, I mean, this, we're very late, and so we should do this right away. And then I, I'll talk later about.
Councillor Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with Councillor Rippey, and also the, the ones with the yellow dots, they're going to become a more expensive problem if they're not taken care of now. And so I totally agree. Lights are beautiful. And I have seen other small towns, how beautiful they look with the lights. And, oh, you know, if our city looked like that would be great. But, you know, safety is for us, should be a priority.
Councillor Marshall.
With the lighting itself, if we were to take out the lighting and actually just put in outlets there?
What's that? I think that's what it is.
It doesn't include lighting, it's just, just the outlets itself.
That's all it is. That's what this bid is, or this project it is. Councillor Gustafson. Well, let's go back to the discussion. Let's try to stay on. So we're just talking about trees? We're going one by one, so we can keep on tasking.
Because the, I think the lighting and the trees, they, they do coincide.
It's the next, we're almost there. I promise. It's the next bullet. So the consensus I'm hearing from council is that we would want to look at doing all of it, yellow and red. That's a, that's a consensus I'm hearing. Is that inaccurate? I want to make sure my colleagues, okay. So, next option, next bullet is what option, if any, does the council prefer regarding lighting? If revenues are not sufficient for the preferred option, what section is most important? Can we go back to the funding options as well, really quick? And then we'll look at the funding options, and then if we could have the slide, Mariah, that has the two sections, that would be amazing. That'd be helpful to, I think, me. Okay, what was the funding options, though, really quick before this? I don't see, I'm just gonna, I'm looking at Paul. What about our ARPA? I had written down in my notes, what about ARPA funds? Like, we should have a better idea of if there's any left over. So I just want to plug that into an additional option, is ARPA, I think, would be a good. We have until the end of. Yeah, can, can we try to get an estimate on ARPA funds by the next meeting? Or, I mean, or can we have a, can, can we add that to our bullet point? Is there, can we get consensus to use ARPA funds to pay for some of this, if we can? And then anyways, but we can discuss that later. Okay, go back to the sections, please. Let's talk about lighting. What are the options for lighting? What do you guys think? And if cost is an issue, which area would you like to have lighted? That was the question. And I'm going to start with Councillor Gustafson.
So I, I first had a question, would, when Jesse and I, and I think a couple other people talked about this before, we talked about burrowing under where the trees are currently.
Yep.
To get electrical, is that the, is that the strategy for this?
Yeah, if you want to try and minimize the cost, the good time to do it is when the tree is out of the ground and that area is clear, it's easier to burrow underneath and put conduit in. So there are some synergies associated with that. You can do it with the tree in, it just might cost a little bit more because of the staging and, and those sorts of things, but.
Okay, so that was the strategy that was discussed with doing the lighting at the same time as the trees, because it, it is more cost-effective, because you're already there. You're already taking some trees out, and it's, we're not removing the sidewalks, because that's even more expensive. This is just the infrastructure and the foundations for the, for the lighting, for, for electricity. Not lighting itself, but just electricity in the downtown area. But, but that's why these two things are married together, is because if we're going to put electrical in the downtown area, this would be the time to do it and be the least expensive option.
How many areas is that, like, how many trees is that going to go from side to side kind of thing? Or how many trees is it going to light up? Are we going to skip every other tree? Going to go every four trees? Are you going to go like one tree a block? I mean, that's, if you're going every tree and that's, that's the amount, that might not be as bad. But if you're doing like five trees. five trees, it doesn't make sense. You know what I mean? Is it, is there any idea how many trees you're looking at doing this to?
So I think this estimate is based on lighting every tree in that corridor on both sides. It does not include lights going back over the road, just lights in that particular tree, like for lack of a better description, like Christmas tree lights or something like that.
Yeah, let me, Counselor, Council President Rippey.
So if we went back to the slide on the downtown tree replacement, I'm looking at which ones need to be replaced. And, and you're considering the lighting and the cost effectiveness of when trees are out. Twenty-first Street on the south side, you're having four trees taken out there and one across the street over there across from Peter Schmitz. That would make the cost effective, the logic of the cost effectiveness would work in that area. It would also work down toward Urban Decanter and across from the appliance, Dyke's appliance. So those, those areas, but to, to say that you're going to gain a lot of efficiencies with costs up and down all of Main Street, I don't, I don't think you're gonna, you're gonna achieve that because those trees are remaining. And I think Counselor Marshall's question about how many trees, I'm not sure that it's necessary to do every tree. I would consider doing every third tree. It all depends upon the engineering. I'm not sure what the engineering is with regard to the putting in the conduits and the plugs. If, if you, if you can, so I don't know whether you're trying to group three trees together or, or how that's going to work. But just looking at this, this slide here, I would recommend maybe focusing only on Twenty-first Street or maybe the end of Main Street, but not necessarily trying to do the whole area.
My, my opinion about it is that we made efforts to be part of Oregon Main Street. Like, people really like the events downtown. The business owners in the downtown, like, we need to invest in our downtown core. We have acute downtown. We have all of these things going for it. And like, in order to have events and to like bring people downtown, you have to create the nostalgia, like, you have to create the the environment. And I think that this is the time to do it. And I think especially if we have ARPA dollars left, I think our TLT, do you need to step out for a moment? You're fine. I think our TLT dollars, like, this is, if the TLT is for tourism and you can light up and create a venue, but with some lights in our downtown area, I think it's worth it. I think what we could, I mean, Jesse's are an option that we could know more about the cost and what, how much money we have and then like scaffold, you know how the, I mean, I've been doing a lot of work on the TV Highway Project and I feel like that's an, an example of a project that we can scaffold depending on funds. And so I would hate to say, I, you know, as a policymaker, you never want to choose. Oftentimes, we have to choose, like, safety is definitely more important than ambiance. But if we know that we have some additional funds and that it's actually an investment in our economic development, I think it's worth it.
I think what we were trying to get was a sense of if there was, you know, if you had to choose between Main and Twenty-first, if you would choose Main over Twenty-first, one or the other, or if you wanted to do Main and Twenty-first, or at least price out Main and Twenty-first from Main to the east and not necessarily go to the alleyway. We were trying to kind of just get a general scope that if we had to make some choices here, what they would be. What staff can do is, is at least go find out how much available funds might be for this project. And as you mentioned, Mayor, kind of scaffold what the different options are and their costs are so that it could be a menued approach for council. We just simply didn't have time to go look at all of the amount of funds in each funds before this work session, but we did want to get a sense of prioritization from the council so that when we do go back, we can make a more accurate assessment about what that might look like.
Okay, let's go through the areas and then, yes, Counselor Gustafson.
So as far as what's a priority, again, I go back to what Counselor Rippey said, we need to take care of the trees that are a risk to people immediately. You know, that, that should just be kind of the way we go forward. Just another thing to, to call out is if there are electrical more frequently, that is going to be beneficial for people that are vendors at our events. Electricity is more readily available to them. So that's just another thing. And I, when you do send it out to bid and, and find out what, you know, what different scopings of this would look like, I would be interested in knowing if we only did part of it, how much more would it be for us to wait to do the other part? As, as opposed to going ahead and spending it all now versus having two separate projects? What, what does that look like?
I think the one thing we're going to have to go back is price all the trees. We'll get that price kind of locked down and then we can find out how much available funds is left over and then give a menu of options for both lighting and waste enclosures. We would be curious, how does council feel about the waste enclosures? Are those okay?
Yeah, let's talk about waste. Are we? Yeah, I think they're okay. I think too, like, one, you know, that's totally a different topic, but it would be good if on the, does the city give the event organizers the cardboard boxes for waste?
I'll have to get back, I don't know.
I just think it'd be good if it said, "Event trash," right? Because people, like, when I, this oftentimes happens with the city, that you told me and a few of us, like, the event should be using these and the city trash cans are for like city, but nobody that comes to an event knows that. Nobody knows the difference between a trash can. They see a trash can, they put trash in it. I mean, and I'm, that's like no, but the thing is if we have these systems and nobody understands the systems or knows the system, then it really doesn't matter because they're still going to put trash in the other trash can. So I just think it, some sort of way to identify, like, use this trash can during the event would be helpful. Okay, and then is there consensus on the timeline? What was the timeline?
I think the timeline was to try and get something bid in the winter so that we could look at removing the trees and or planting new ones this winter, this spring.
Well, I want to use ARPA funds, so the sooner the better in my vote. I mean, not vote, in my opinion. Okay, anyone else?
I'm fine with the timeline. I just don't think we need to move forward on the lighting just yet. I don't think there's enough information. So if you're, the lighting is part of that timeline, I'm not, I'm not in favor of the lighting at this point.
I think we can go back. We got enough information to sharpen this up and we will come back with some definitive costs and some definitive funding sources and available funding, and then we can make.
Okay, is the council good with the direction we're moving? Okay, cool. Thank you very much. I'm going to adjourn this work session. To call to order this work session of the Forest Grove City Council, the topic is Forest Grove Senior and Community Center. No public comment will be taken and the council will take no formal action. All members of the Forest Grove City Council are present in person and one on Zoom. And I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, Mr. Paul Downey. Take it away, Paul.
Meeting Mayor and Councilors, this is a follow-up to the last work session we had on the senior center. So we can go to the first slide. So again, the Forest Grove Senior Community Center is a 501(c)(3) charitable not-for-profit. It gave notice to the city that they will accept the operations agreement effective November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. This is extended to December thirty-first after our September sixteenth board meeting. And at the August twenty-sixth work session, we discussed two options, one, a request for proposal to manage or not-for-profit to manage and operate it, or two, the city to manage and operate it. Consensus was reached that the, to prepare an RFP process to operate and manage the forest, the senior community center. Purpose of this work session is to cover the RFP process, discuss the main elements. It's important that we complete this review tonight to maintain, to maintain schedule to hopefully transition by December thirty-first to a new nonprofit. Staff normally selects a successful applicant, however, due to the exclusive use and council approval of the operations agreement, staff recommends that council be more involved in this RFP process. Reminder, the Forest Grove City Community Center was established in nineteen seventy-two and has been under an operating agreement with the city to exclusively offer the services since nineteen ninety-two. The city owns the property and the facility and has made significant improvements over the past decade, including roof, kitchen, windows, flooring, restrooms, parking lots, seal and HVAC, with most of those major capital improvements being done with CDBG money. Current operation agreement stipulates the forest, the senior community center has exclusive use of the facility and retains all rent and lease revenue to sustain operations. The term is perpetual but can be terminated by either party upon sixty days written notice. Forest Grove Senior Community Center is responsible for all day-to-day maintenance, operational expenses, including staff, janitorial landscaping and bookkeeping. The city pays for the, city pays for the city, the city's utility expenses and is responsible for the exterior maintenance of the facility and the parking lot. And the agreement also requires appointment of a council liaison to attend the senior center board meetings. Their annual budget is approximately two hundred and forty thousand dollars, which half is raised through fundraising, thirty percent through bingo, twenty percent through rentals. Bingo license cannot be transferred. It is, it is for the senior communities center corporation. Anybody else who wanted to do bingo there would have to apply for their own license if they wanted to continue doing bingo. The Forest Grove Senior Community Center has indicated they have approximately three hundred thousand dollars in reserve. It is at the, it is at their board's discretion how to spend it. The city budgets approximately thirty-five thousand dollars per year for utilities and exterior maintenance of the facility. Current services include health and wellness, for example, exercise, medical equipment, CPR, Red Cross foot care, socialization, big clubs, guilds, groups and the bingo, rentals, journeys, rented ride connection, meals on wheels, church services, there's a church rents on a Sunday and rotary. Fundraisers include prison in the Grove, the luau, trunk or treat, tree lighting. Any questions on what we've gone over so far before we get into the RFP process?
I'm not seeing any questions.
Okay, the main elements of the RFP consist of one, purpose and schedule. This describes the overall project purpose, point of contact and schedule. Scope of services outlines the general scope of services to be formed, including who, what, where, when and how. Poser and proposal requirements, this outlines the minimum criteria to be able to submit a proposal, i.e. are there licenses required? What experience do you have operating programs or a similar facility? Number of projects or programs you currently operate and say any similar type facilities as well. Another proposal selection and evaluation process, this outlines interviews, scoring committees and the scoring criterion. Okay, so the purpose of these currents, current purpose under the current operation agreement is the primary purpose of the senior community center is to provide services to older members of the community and all citizens of Forest Grove may use or lease the facility with the approval of the operators' board of directors. The senior center must remain a, senior services must remain a component of the programs offered commensurate with the property's donated purpose. And so one of the questions we'll be asking later is what would the council like the primary purpose of the facility to be? For example, should it be exclusive for seniors or alternatively? Should it be for all ages and members of the community, including seniors?
Did you want us to stop here and discuss that? Or did you want to go through your whole presentation and we'll come back to this question? How do you want to organize your presentation?
Well, we could probably stop here and talk about that.
I think the intent was to talk about it as we kind of went through it because some are kind of cascading, yeah.
I know, I felt like we could chunk it a little bit. Okay, so let's discuss, we're on bullet three, and the first question is, what would council like the primary purpose of the facility to be? So I'll take hands raised for opinions. I mean, I'll start with my opinion. I think the primary purpose should be senior services. It's my understanding from being on council for ten years that the building was donated with the intent of senior services. And I understand that there's a community aspect, it's senior and community space, but I think the primary purpose, so for me in an RFP, I would like to see, when I say primary, I would like to see definitely at least fifty, over fifty percent senior service. Because that, that to me would be the primary use. And then beyond that, if it's divided into rentals, into youth, into adult, into whatever it is, I would feel comfortable with the agreement that was made prior to me being on council with that building. Okay, and I see Counselor Ewing's hand is raised.
So I agree with the mayor in that I do believe the primary focus needs to be on senior. However, the purpose was for senior and community. So there are other activities that go on in there. I think one of my concerns that I have is when we're talking about putting it out for proposal, there have been many opportunities for other nonprofits to look at and be involved with these services. And over time, that just has not worked out. So I think we need to be very minded, mindful on how we're doing this. I can see it having primarily the majority of the services, ride connection, meals on wheels. They do a phenomenal program on Medicare and supplement, those types of things that directly impact our elder citizens. But then I do feel that a portion of it can be opened up for community events. Several community events at the board meeting were brought up surrounding food and different opportunities and activities that could help, be held there under a rental service to provide information and resources on food. So I see it being able to have both of those types of aspects as the key focus of what they need to be doing. I also really feel after having met with the board, with Paul's presentation at the board, that we are in desperate, desperate need of park and rec space, that they're overflowing at the aquatic center for programs that could help the entire community but are not necessarily aquatic or sauna or those type parks and rec, but a little bit broader services with our parks and rec department. As really what I want to focus on when we're talking about putting something out for a bid. Thank you.
Council President Rippey.
I, I, I agree with the, that the seniors need to be served and it's a primary purpose. If you look at the, the rentals and the use of the facility itself and what we're, what we would be asking a nonprofit to do would be to basically say in the eventuality that there's our not enough senior programs to support their operations that when you say it has to be more than fifty percent, if you don't have more than fifty percent of the facility being used for seniors, then you're really strapping the nonprofit from being able to use the facility by whatever means it's necessary in service of both seniors and community in order for them to be a successful nonprofit. And I think that's part of the issue that we've been facing is that the clientele of seniors that have been using the facilities specifically since COVID has declined significantly. And not that that, not that the programs can't be increased, certainly I think they can be. But I would be cautious about being too definitive to a nonprofit in an agreement saying you must do this. The idea is for the nonprofit to be successful. That's the primary purpose. If that success is focused mostly on seniors, great. But if it has to be the other percentage, more on community than seniors, it's more important that the, a nonprofit be successful, in my opinion.
Yeah, I think you make a good point. So would you say, so I was just thinking like maybe during Yeah, I think you make a good point. So would you say, so I was just thinking like maybe during the RFP process, they would need a percentage, but would we just take out? Would we just say we believe the primary purpose should be for senior activities or senior services? And not put the percentage in? I think you're making a good point. Ball passed to Counselor Guston.
Um, I, I haven't seen the contract, the current contract, I don't think. So I, the percentages, I agree with Counselor Rippey. I don't think we should have percentages on there because things are too fluid in society. And yes, we need to find out what has changed. So how, how can we bring the seniors back in and get them more active again with the community center? But I do think it should be open as a community center. And one of the things they provide is senior services and find out what, what do we want those senior services to be? What do they do now exactly? And are all of those ones that we want to insist on in the contract? Is there something else we want to add that you, you must work with this organization or you must provide this service? Are there, are there definitive things that we want the, this organization to work with? And in addition, I'm kind of hoping that, that whoever does take this, and I don't know if you would be able to, you know, put this in the RFP, but I think that there should be a closer relationship with the city, a closer partnership. Cause we've got the Parks and Recreation District that's doing the fund for all and that extends to seniors. I don't know what, what that enhanced partnership could look like, but I do think that there's some opportunities there.
Do, Paul, can you provide a little bit more info, information about the, the donation of the building? And then what would that, like the agreement between the city when that happened? So I, I've heard over the last decade that it was
The
See, it was like for a senior.
Yeah, the senior center corporation owned the land, as I understand it. And then when they did the first community development block grant, it was going to be for the city, but the city needed to own the, had to own the property where the building was going to go on. So the senior center corporation donated the land to the city.
That's correct. The only thing I would add is when the land was initially donated to the Forest Grove Senior and Community Center, it was donated as a, for the express purpose of a senior center. And then later it became, I think through the five oh one C three designation, I believe it, it was still seniors, but also community center was added to it and not viewed to be inconsistent with, inconsistent with providing senior services.
Anyone that hasn't given an opinion about the primary purpose of the facility?
Is there another place in Forest Grove for our seniors?
Say that again, please.
Is there another, is there another place in Forest Grove where our seniors can go play bingo, take classes, have a meal? No, no, there isn't. So I'm going to advocate, I do agree that there needs to be some flexibility for a nonprofit to be able to create some revenue, some way to, to make some money. But I think our seniors are already connected to this center. And I would not like to see that taken away. But I agree on the flexibility that needs to be put on that request for proposal.
Counselor Marshall or Martinez?
I would, I would agree. I think that it should be, I wouldn't want to put like a specific number on what it has to be here and what it has to be there. Cause we're gonna do this RFP, we're gonna put it out there. We're trusting that this nonprofit that we put in there is gonna do the right thing. We're not just gonna take somebody off the street and say, hey, we think you're good and not do our due diligence to figure out what they're about. So we're not gonna just put somebody in there that isn't in the mindset that this is a senior center, but it is helping the community as well. So it's, it's, it's all inclusive. It should.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Martinez.
And I agree with Counselor Valenzuela as well. Also, I, I think what whoever takes over should also have the best for seniors in mind. And what, what sort of services are, are desired by the seniors? I mean, that, that's really what's gonna drive it to not, you know, maybe not tell them necessarily to do certain things, but what do the seniors, what are they involved in, in now? And what kind of things would they like to see?
So for the purpose of time to move to the next questions you have, what I'm hearing, the consensus is, is primary for seniors, but also a community service with flexibility for whoever applies to.
Yeah, I think that's why you'll find they changed their name to the Senior and Community Center. They wanted to focus on seniors still, but also still be able to offer against the community that might bring in some money to help them, help them fund the senior center.
Can I just mention one more thing?
Sure.
Um, within the RFP, there's nothing wrong with us writing that we, we want whoever's gonna respond to the RFP. What are your ideas? Like what, what senior services would you provide? Because that's a, that's a good start to see who, who has what ideas and what do they think that they're going to provide. And that way it opens it up to not, you know, us deciding, well, it needs to have this, this and this. It, it allows those groups to tell us what their plan is and what their strategy is so that we can make an informed decision.
I mean, we'll go through and talk about some services, but you never lock them down that tight. You always want to know what the proposer is going to offer. You just want to have some basics probably listed in there. So, next slide. Okay, the RFP's schedule takes between nine to twelve weeks. Assists of about a week to write, then four to six weeks for the advertising and the responding process for them to get their response back. Then review and certify interviews, and then we give a notice of intent to award, but there's also a protest period if you're not selected. And that's one to two weeks and then the award. And this nine, I mean, that's keeping things moving for everybody involved. It's not, it's not just sitting around. Everything, everything that comes in has got to stay on schedule if to make the nine to twelve weeks on something like that. We're also encouraging the counselors to tour the facility with the Forest Grove Senior Community Center prior to interviews. So you can, we can make arrangements or you can make arrangements. I mean, Rayanne Johnston's executive director down there, she'll be probably more than happy to take you through.
Counselor Ewing has a question.
Yes.
So I guess I'm looking at this a little bit differently in this respect. So we put out the proposal. We get no bits that really meet what we're talking about. We have a descender, December due date of when things are going to be turned over. Did we totally and completely decide that the city using the space or those overflow park and recs? Have we talked about would the city be renting that then from this nonprofit? Are we talking about not expanding those services? I guess that I feel that we've done this for so long, your center, really not backing them as a city activity. I'm worried, Paul, with your layout and how tight it is, if the outcome is that nobody comes in and wants to do senior services, I hope that we have a backup on what we're gonna do come December thirty-first. That's concern going forward.
Responsive proposers on it, then we, we will come back to the council at the first meeting after the proposal deadline and say, we didn't get any responsive proposers and we may try to find out from a few of them why they chose not to respond. And then the next question with council, what do you want to do? Cause the senior center, they plan on stepping away from it. So that, that point in time,
Yes.
At that point in time, we would say, what does the council wish to do? Does the council want the staff to somehow figure out how to temporarily keep the doors open or how, how do we want to move forward? So I'll see if Jesse wants to, any more comment on that or?
Yeah, that's just a real concern because our time is so short, you guys. I just have a deep concern about how time restricted we are. Okay, thank you. Yeah, Jesse, I'm listening.
Counselor, oh, go ahead.
The transition period, I mean, that may be a bit tight anyway for anybody that wants to take it over. So there may be some discussion about transition from the senior, if we do find a new vendor, a new not-for-profit, there still might be some transition timing issue there. So that's, that may be another issue that comes up through this process.
Thank you, Counselor Guston.
I was gonna actually piggyback on Counselor Ewing's with exactly that. The timeline that we have is not enough time to transition. It doesn't matter who's stepping in. We have to have some, some sort of support system, even in the best scenario that with that transition being such a short transition, we must have city support, in my opinion. And then that might help us in, in the event that nobody takes it. And then we've already decided what at least temporary city transition support will be. And then we can just kind of build from there.
Yeah, I think in my mind, that's one of the reasons that I supported going through the RFP process because it also, it gives the city more options. We would have tried to like without the let, without including this in our levy, like try to rush through it, we would have only had our option, but this gives us two to three months to plan, to look, to have options and to move forward and to see if there's any interest. So I think that in terms of financial stewardship and sustainability and programming, I think this is, gives us the most options in a situation where we didn't have a lot of time to plan ahead. I think we can go on to the next slide. Or is this a lot?
Cause this entails an operation agreement with exclusive use, staff recommends following process. Again, we I just went through this last summer, the advertised November, October first to November first. And that's November first would be when they proposals we do back, staff certifies and scores all applicants. Council interviews up to the top three applicants and reaches consensus on a single provider at the November twelfth work session. And we issue a notice of intent award and a protest November thirteenth, I mean. And then council resolution approving operations agreement November twenty-fifth. And then the transition between November twenty-sixth and December thirty-first. That's why I said this is on a very tight timeline. So it's.
I have a concern because I think I communicated with the council and staff that I'm gonna be at NLC on the the eleven, twelve work session. So I don't know if we need to have like a special meeting and public notice that for the week before. But I want to like make sure that, cause I would like to be as part of that team making that decision and I don't want to miss it on eleven, twelve. Eleven, twelve, I'll be out of town at NLC. So I don't know if we just put it a week ahead with a special work session or?
Yeah, we could look at having a separate special work session if the council would like. If we do it ahead of then, which we, I think we can, it would enable a little bit more time on the backend. So if there's a consensus amongst the council to try and schedule a separate work session for potential interviews, we'd be happy to try and do that.
Yeah, well, that's what I would like. I guess I'll hear from my colleagues if they would support that. Do you guys support that or? Do, I see two head nods, three, four, five. Okay. And then Counselor Ewing, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with doing the timeline as you've got. I just, again, and maybe because I've been working with these folks, but I again say, I think we need to be looking at a transition plan regardless. Because I know we've got it down there for like a week, but I think that will make the senior center, and I'm speaking in my opinion, nervous. Because they're waiting, they're waiting, they're waiting. They don't know what's going to happen. They are having to talk to community members who are panicked and worried and upset. I think we must have a transition plan in place, have discussed it before we really do much other than put the proposal out. I'm just really concerned that it's way too far down. We haven't had time to talk about it and really work out the details. And I think it's gonna leave us flat-footed if we don't start and have some input from the staff on what they see as a transition plan. Thank you.
So what I, what I heard is that the staff is gonna work on that and there, and you know, comments from some of the rest of us about the transition plan. So if it makes everyone feel more comfortable, maybe we could add a work session like the eleven, twelve work session about the transition plan. And that way it's advertised from November for, October first to November first, but that also gives staff some time to work on that, right? Like it's the end of September, they have to get the RFP out. So I would say somewhere in November seems like a fair, does that seem fair to you to have a work session in November about the transition plan? What a staff, I want some.
But I, I think we're gonna know more if we, if there are gonna be any applicants. And, and that might give the council some kind of indication about who may be interested. And, but what I was just looking at the calendar, if there is a consensus, we could look at having a work session with the council on November fourth. Actually, I would recommend November fifth, if that's available. That gives staff literally kind of one day to prep all of the applications and certify the applications that we receive. I think staff has already talked about a potential and, and we can continue to talk about a potential contingency plan if the RFP process is not successful. I think the intent behind this is to make sure that the senior center does not close down, that it does continue to operate. And so we certainly will be having discussions about what that might look like if an RFP process is not successful and, and what that transition might look like. I don't think we have that worked out now, but I do know that the intent is to make sure that under either scenario, the senior center doesn't close down. It may have limited hours, it may have reduced services, but we are going to try to make sure that it stays open and has full services as it does now. So that's the intent.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Guston.
I just had a follow-up question to that. So does that mean you'll be working with the senior center to, to make sure that city staff who will be helping with that transition and possibly pinch hitting will, will glean that information off of the staff that's there now so that they're ready?
So we've been meeting with the senior center throughout this process. The senior center, as Paul mentioned earlier, extended the deadline for their notice from November eighteenth, I think, to December thirty-first of this year. And so now we're operating on a new timeline. I think the intent of tonight's work session is that if an RFP is to go out, it's a very tight timeline and staff would like to get some consensus items from the council on some really high-level RFP items to get something out on the street and advertised within a week. And that's October first is when, to keep this timeline. And then if it's, if, if the council's gonna have some pretty good idea of this is going to be, if there's going to be some potential applicants, you're going to know that by November first. And then there's going to be interviews and then council would make in theory a decision by eleven twenty-five. If that is, if there's not a successful applicant, we still have a little over a month at that point to try to come up. I shouldn't say try to come up. I think we'll have a lot of that work done already, but to look at an interim transition plan between November twenty-fifth and the end of the year to make sure that the senior center stays open.
Okay, so let's, if, if there's more questions about the transition plan, let's hold them till the end because we're gonna, we're working on a twenty-minute time limit and we gotta get through the, what I'm hearing is we need to get through these questions about the RFP. So Counselor Ewing, is your question about the RFP or can we move on and, okay, thank you. I saw your hand go down some minute. All right.
So staff's looking for council directions, couple of these points, exclusivity, whether to retain this provision, which allows the not-for-profit to generate rental revenue?
So let's go through this one at a time. So do we think for the RFP, it should be an exclusive operating agreement? I say yes. I see Counselor Guston saying yes. Counselor President Rippey.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Paul. I think that the current agreement requires the current nonprofit to get approval from the city with regard to rentals. So it's not truly an exclusivity.
Yeah, it, it does require them. And I think that you, I think that's another bullet on another page, but that would, we would, that would be another one of the questions. Do we want the council, do we want the city to have to give them written permission to rent the facility?
Jesse. It's exclusive in the sense that they retain all of the rental revenue.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
City does not get a portion of it. So that's the exclusivity clause is whether any revenue they generate, they get to retain.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I saw three head nods, but I need at least four. Okay, I'm seeing more on the side. So yes, for exclusivity.
Okay, then maintenance, whether to retain the requirement, the nonprofit is responsible for all day-to-day maintenance and the city is responsible for for all day-to-day maintenance and the city is responsible for capital improvements?
Yeah, I got two nods here. And then Councilor Rippey wants to make a comment.
So, um, for a long time, ever since I've been on council, my position is that the city should also be responsible for, uh, the grounds maintenance. So it, it's city property. And I think the, the county, the, the city should be responsible for maintaining the grounds, the mowing of the grass, those kinds of things and, and not leave that to, uh, a nonprofit to, to fund those expenses.
Councilor Guffston?
I concur with Councilor Rippey. I think that this will be one step further that the city can do to support financially by providing, um, the day-to-day maintenance for the facility.
So then would you, would do, would we word it as responsible for landscaping and capital improvements? That what you're?
I think that the nonprofit should not be responsible for maintenance or utilities or anything. I think it should be free and clear for them to use because it has been a struggle in the past.
What it, what is day, I guess I, sorry to interrupt, but I want like more, what is day-to-day maintenance? Like, can you give me some examples?
For the plug, the sewer backs up. I mean, and it's.
What?
The sewer backs up and they say that, you know, those sort of, that sort of ongoing type maintenance. I mean, typically we've helped with the sewer because you sometimes never know where the blockage is, but there's, you know, if a light breaks or, you know, a switch, an electrical switch doesn't work, I mean, that's that kind of day-to-day maintenance.
Council, Council President Rippey?
So I, I, I think the data maintenance is the fair wear and tear of, of the utilization of a building is responsibility of those operating the building. So the nonprofit does that today. Uh, we, they also provide the janitorial services, those day-to-day kinds of things that need to go on inside a building with the use of the building. But in terms of this, you know, in, in my, in my mind, the only thing I was adding to the city's ledger was grounds maintenance. Uh, right now the city provides the utilities and all the external, which is great. Uh, but I, the city owns the building, the city owns the grounds. We're just asking a nonprofit to operate, not to be necessarily responsible for maintaining city property, except for the day-to-day wear, which is typical in any contract.
Councilor Ewing?
Yes, I agree. And I do know that this is a stressor for our current, uh, nonprofit group that, uh, maintains the center. And that is, it's not always easy to find somebody who's going to bring in a lawnmower and do that smaller project. So it's really been kind of a burden, not just economically, but in time finding the correct, uh, outdoor maintenance. I agree. I think that that maintenance needs to be the city. It is our building. Day-to-day rental, uh, activities, any renter has to pay to change their light bulbs, those types of things. Um, so, but I think the primary concern was the outdoor maintenance. Thank you.
So is there a consensus, just to add the ground? Go ahead, Jesse.
Sorry, not to be a fly in the ointment. Um, I, I would say that there will be an expense associated with this. I think if you check with parks, they're going to say that their staff is fully allocated and there won't be any bandwidth to be able to do these types of day-to-day maintenance. And so if the city is going to assume this responsibility, it's likely going to be on a private contract of some sorts and that will have some kind of expense. It's not a small area to maintain. Um, and so we can look into what that cost is and we can check with the senior center. Right now it's being done on a private contract and/or by volunteers, but that would be an assumption of an expense that we would, we would have to look at budgeting for.
Is, is there a way to not put it in the scope of services, but then have like a section on the RFP that says like negotiable items? Right, like things that, I mean, cause what if? I don't know. What if it's not a big deal to the person coming in? I mean, so is there a way to do that? Like negotiable items that like, we don't really necessarily want to completely tip our hand up, but we're saying like, hey, there's room, there's space for us to discuss these items of who's going to pay for it or not? Can you, can you do that on an RFP or no? You typically don't do it.
You can do it. It makes it a little harder to, harder to get responses and compare responses.
I don't know. I'm like back and forth because I think everyone's right. I think that what Councilor Rippey's saying about the maintenance is completely correct. And, but I've also sat on the budget committee for the last three years and argued that we don't have the operational staff for the parks to do the increased park acreage that we have now. And so it's very like tricky for me because I don't want to put like, you, when you talk about retention and quality of workload, like I don't want to keep dumping on, it feels like I'm, we're like adding another thing to the parks. Jesse?
Maybe what I would suggest is let us meet with the senior center and let's find out how much it costs. And then we, if we want, we can, we can look at that and either try and bring that back to the council or try to figure out a way to amortize that, absorb it or something. But maybe we start there. It might be a de minimis expense, but it may not.
Okay, is that fine with the council? Okay. Open hours, whether to include a requirement of the facility to open a certain number of hours per week. Currently there is no requirement in the operation agreement. The facility is currently open 35 hours per week. Well, yes, Council.
For me, this is a hard one to say because you don't know what the nonprofit is going to bring to the table with regards to programs. Um, and again, there's, there needs to be some flexibility. Uh, and again, if you start limiting or requiring certain things, their, their level of flexibility is, is taken away. On the other hand, obviously we don't want them to go down to just five hours a week. There's got to be some reasonableness to it. So, uh, I, you know, I don't, I don't know that putting in hours is, is going to solve the problem.
Yeah, I think you summed it up pretty well. Council, Councilor Guffston?
That's what my question was going to be. It, has it been a problem? Is this a problem we are addressing or we're kind of looking just in case it happens? Has open hours been an issue?
Just a question for the council. I mean, whether you wanted to request to have a minimum number of hours, you expect the center to be open each week. Cause you do get drop-ins there and things of that nature, things of that nature sometimes.
Well, I just, go ahead, Jesse.
It's not uncommon to set a minimum service standard in some type of contract like this. Normally that's open hours. This is not to be confused with hours where it might be open in the evening or for a per use basis. These are open, public hours where anybody can come in and enjoy and sit down and, and take advantage of the programs they're having currently. The open hours are I believe from nine to four, Monday through Friday, closed on weekends.
I, I just, I don't know if my, if I missed it or my question wasn't answered. I was asking, has it been a problem in the past? Like are, are we addressing the open hours in here? Are we asking the question from council because in the past, the facility has?
I don't, I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's been an issue in the past. And just looking at the contract, we were just wondering if the council wanted to put some kind of minimum requirement in it.
If I might interject, during the board meeting, uh, we talked about alternatives and things that could possibly be done to kind of, um, assist the city or assist whatever group, uh, may take over. And we had talked about reduced hours. It isn't currently a problem, but we had discussed whether or not that might be an added option. So I don't think it's a problem at this point in time, but I think it's an opening discussion with the senior center about what hours are really valid for them, that they really feel are essential to be open. Because I didn't get the sense that they weren't able to keep it open, but I did get the sense from the meeting that they were willing to discuss perhaps reducing those to a set number of hours. Thank you.
Did you have another question or comment, Councilor Ewing?
No, that, I just wanted to provide that from the board meeting.
Perfect, thank you. So let's go through and first decide on the open hours. Is there, can, do we want to require a minimum amount of hours per week? Let's do like a, a thumbs up or a thumbs down? Do you speak had no?
Do I want to require minimum?
Yeah, like a minimum, require the facility to be open for a certain?
No, I don't.
Nope. Okay, I'm saying no.
Website, whether the operator be required to create and maintain a separate and dedicated website for the senior community center as is currently done?
I think yes, Rippey. My opinion is yes. Like that's the way people get information.
Yeah.
Barring leases, whether the operator honor the existing leases until expiration and whether they, whether to retain the requirement that the city provide written consent, say for new leases. I'm assuming we'll have to honor the current leases since our contract and the city's agreed to them. So it's, most of them expire in 2025 anyway. So.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there a que, is there a contract with ride connection?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe so.
I believe that office is offered free of charge.
Yeah, so I, there's a contract with Journeys. I mean, if they don't have a contract, then there's nothing to honor.
Contract with Journeys and Meals on Wheels.
Yes.
But I don't believe there's a contract.
With right.
I believe the longest contract that's in place right now ends in 2025.
In fact, we did, they discussed that at the board meeting that, uh, they were going to be looking over the contract because, uh, it is not currently, um, in place. Uh, it needs to be reviewed and re-looked at. So with ride connection, no, they do not have a current contract. They were in the midst of, um, working that through with ride connection.
So do we want to retain the requirement the city provide written consent? Now this, this is just for the longer-term rentals. It's not for like your, like your one-day events or anything like that. It's for the longer-term rentals when they're renting part of the facility over a longer period term, like Meals on Wheels and Journeys.
Any opinion by the council? Council President Rippey?
Not so much an opinion. Well, I guess it is. It's just that I, I don't see an issue with this. Uh, again, it's a city building and whoever, whoever rents space there, you know, we need to ensure as a city that, that we're okay with it, that it doesn't get rented out to groups that, uh, don't go with our values.
Okay. Anyone else? Any opinion? I'm fine with how it, it is with the existing leases.
Current terms perpetual, noting it will be a new operator. Do we want a fixed term, say offer, have an initial two-year term for the not-for-profit with an option to extend one year subject to council approval? And then do we also want the operator be required to present to the city council every six months during the initial two-year term? If that's the term you select.
Yeah, for the, for, like, I like the term with a two-year with an, with a plus one. Um, I think that aligns with, I like things to be nice and aligned in system. So with our levy, so there was, you know, communication about this options within the city. And I think that this aligns with the levy and we can see how, if, you know, someone applies for it, if the operator's doing a good job, it gives us some options. And then it just keeps us accountable to make some decisions for that next operational levy. Um, and I like presentations. I mean, that's why I invite, you know, county commissioners, like our chairs from our, like our public arts commission chairs are here. So I like it just, just how it's written, right? Like that. Council President Rippey?
I'm okay with the term, Paul. I think the, the only thing that I wanted to bring out earlier, we had this discussion about, uh, not enough time in terms of transition. Right now the current contract allows 60 days. Quite honestly, I don't think 60 days is enough time. It, it had this nonprofit given 60-day notice anywhere in the past 20 years, 60 days would not have been, have been enough to transition. So I would recommend to the staff to reconsider that portion and, and think of an appropriate amount of time that the city would need transition from when, when the nonprofit.
Yeah. Oh, I, if they want, if they want to, if they want to withdraw, then we get more notice.
Correct.
We need like six months, a year. I mean, it feels like it's. Councilor Guffston?
I, I would recommend the same, the same, at least three months. Um, and then as far as the, uh, presentations to the city, I think I agree with the six months and then initial two-year term and then annually after that. I, I'd like to see how they're doing and have that reported out.
Okay. Next slide. Do the operator be required to have at least one staff member on site during all public open hours? This, I mean, if they have a special rental, then they wouldn't necessarily need a staff person on site, but if they're open to the public, do you want to require that they, that they have at least one staff person on site?
They're currently a staff member dedicated.
You're talking about one of their staff people or a city?
One of the new not-for-profit staff people.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody on site. If they're open to the public, that they have at least one person on site.
Thank you, I misunderstood.
So we're talking about a, a volunteer, not paid staff?
That would be up to them.
Okay, I just wanted to, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Is there agreement for that? I'd say yes. I mean, my opinion, yes, like if it's public open hours, there needs to be a representative there of the organization to answer questions, to supervise, to keep the building. Yeah, Council President Rippey?
So one more thing that I, you know, I don't think the current contract talks about the, uh, the use of liquor on site or the sale of liquor on site. The center has a, a liquor license. But as far as I know, the current contract does not require an OLCC certified, uh, liquor server, uh, to be on site during, when it's rented for parties and things like that, that they intend on having liquor. Uh, that there's no requirement right now that I'm aware of that requires that OLCC certified server to be on site.
There, it's with OLCC, there is because they have to do a, that person renting it would have to go through, attach themselves to that liquor license, but they would have to have a server license themselves to apply. If they don't have a server license, they won't get approved. It's the same thing. I do it with the beer garden every year. It's the same exact thing. So even though they have a liquor license, it just means that they can serve liquor, but they would have to have the person that's there have to show his liquor license is going to serve. So no matter what, if a nonprofit or, or somebody rents it, they have to actually provide that information to the OLCC.
So basically we don't need to require it because it's already being required.
So what we can put in there is that if liquor is served in the premises, the operator must assure that they are following all state rules and regulations pertaining to the service of liquor.
Okay, we have three minutes left, so we're going to try to.
Next one is more just kind of general. I mean, we don't expect to discuss exercise, physical, personal care, just what type of general programming categories, if any, might you want to include in the RFP like health and wellness programs, socialization programs, personal growth programs? And then kind of, if you want those categories and leave them up to the person submitting the RFP to talk about how they would meet those requirements.
I think what we were looking for from council, I'm sorry to interrupt, is whether they're okay with those kind of categories. There is a host of different programs that are within each of those potential categories. Those are the general categories that are being provided now. They're not just necessarily for seniors, they can be for all ages, but we just wanted a general broad brush of categorization.
Councilor Guffston?
Do we want to use the word required on any of these?
Well, yeah, because programming is required. We definitely want programming for social, for senior services, right? Like for me, I definitely want, I mean, that's like the whole idea is the senior center people go there to socialize, to ex, you know, I def, I definitely want programs to be offered there. So I definitely want programming required.
I mean, like specific programs when we're, they're like they're calling out the categories. Do we want to, do we want to require those specific categories? Cause when we were talking earlier, we were talking about, you know, asking them to provide these kinds of services and these kinds of services. And there was a little bit of, of pushback on that. So I'm just reminding us on that. It's, you know, I have my own opinions, but I'm just asking the question.
I, I think the categories are fine because they're broad enough that, uh, uh, operator can come in and say, hey, we're going to do Zumba or we're going to do, you know, bingo, whatever. Like as long as, it's kind of like when you design the charter, right? Like they should be broad bookends where people can be creative within that, but you're making sure you're meeting the needs of the community. bookends where people can be creative within that, but you're making sure you're meeting the needs of the community. Is there, I mean, are you guys okay with having those like categories or?
I, I have, excuse me. I think the categories are fine. I don't think that, I think that those are the categories and the values currently that the senior center is trying to provide. And I think by giving the flexibility of what those look like to a potential nonprofit will also give us an opportunity to kind of see what their thinking is and programs that they would be bringing in. So I think that the categories are important, but what goes under those categories, I think, provides more and necessary flexibility. So I'm happy with this at this point.
Okay. Councilor Gufferson, did you wanna? Do you want to say anything else or no?
No.
Okay. Let's go to finances.
We're just asking, does the, do we want to require the nonprofit to pay the city utility expenses or do you want the city to continue, say the city will continue to pay those?
Yeah, I support that we continue to pay them because I'm concerned about adding more, but I think we should do, I think this is an easy thing that we can do to help support a nonprofit come in to do this job. And we're already doing it. So I'm in favor of keeping this. Does anyone else have a different opinion? I don't see a different opinion.
Almost. Next slide.
We still have, okay.
Um, potential requirements for the, it must be a not-for-profit certified by state and federal government of required to provide certain types of services. They must be able to demonstrate financial sustainability, projected expenses and how they will be funded. Must demonstrate experience offering programs or specifically propose how they would offer the aforementioned programs. And does the city council want to require a certain amount of experience offering the programs that they're going to as a requisite to apply? Do you want somebody that has this type of experience operate, offering these types of programs?
Okay.
That would be preferable.
What was that? I'm sorry.
Does the council want a, to require a certain amount of experience offering the programs as a requisite to apply? And Councilor Valenzuela said that would be preferable.
I would say yes to all of those.
Councilor Ewing, she's giving me a thumb.
Yeah, I'm giving you a thumbs up. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Got one more slide? Okay, this is, these aren't set in stone. These are just kind of when we, typically when we do RFPs, we provide point scales and we typically weight the heavier points on your qualifications and your experience administering the type of programs they may offer, their program types, approaches, qualifications and experience of staff. They may not know their staff, but they may have the executive staff that works at the not-for-profit. And then the ability to financially sustain operations, you can see that. And then as we go down farther, demonstrated ability to partner with other organizations, transition plan to work with the senior community center regarding assets, maintenance and programs. And then the program quality and completeness. That way we can relate to the points for how clear and concise and how needed it.
Uh, Councilor Gufferson?
I recommend decreasing the last one to five and increasing ability to financially sustain by five.
No problem there.
Um, just, is there consensus on that? I don't, I don't know. I feel like, I guess so being nine, 10% would be quality and completeness. I mean, I don't think it really matters either way. Anyone have a strong opinion about it?
I, I agree with Councilor Gufferson.
Okay.
Okay. Won't make that change.
Any other comments about?
Well, so that's, that should be the end of it.
Yes.
Okay. Three minutes over.
I think we have enough information to move forward on a.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. I'm gonna.
Jesse had a question.
Just briefly, sorry. So just to make sure that we're clear, staff will take these recommendations. We'll draft up an RFP and we will look at advertising the RFP on October 1st. Okay.
Oh, we, we did not, we probably mentioned one thing. We should probably know who most of the proposers are because we're probably going to have a mandatory pre-proposal conference where if you want to propose, you'll need to come to a meeting where we can discuss, discuss things. So we'll, we'll have a good notion fairly early on how many potential proposers there are. So.
Okay. Thank you. This work session is now adjourned and we're gonna take a five-minute break. Sorry to the people in the audience for taking five minutes before we start. I would like to call to order this work session of the Forest Grove City Council. The topic is URA, Finance and Possible Debt Issuance. No public comment will be taken and the board will take no formal action. I will now turn it over to our Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, Mr. Paul Downey.
All right. Thank you. As Mariah gets up, we'll get started. All right. Again, as the mayor said, this is on finance and possible debt issuance for the, for the URA. So next slide. Purpose better understand the financial position of the URA and to review the possible issuance of debt to facilitate development opportunities. If there are consensus, consensus to issue debt, the URA board and possibly the city council will have to approve it. Background, the URA has been looking at larger projects in the near term, as we've discussed, for the URA board. It lacks the cash needed to move forward on these projects, but debt can be issued to borrow the cash needed. In fact, URAs are expected to and frequently do use debt to purchase property and/or assist in the development of property. That's one of the main purposes of the URA is to do things such as debt to help further development. Debt was issued by the URA for the Jesse Quinn project. That debt's been paid off and the property tax revenue has grown. So the URA is in position to issue more debt. Current maximum indebtedness under the URA plan is $15 million, of which about $12.5 million remains. Currently, the expiration of the URA was set under the URA plan originally passed by the URA board of 2035. However, state laws eliminated all URA 20-year, excuse me, expiration dates and pegged the expiration date to the end of debt repayment of the maximum indebtedness. So and you'll pass that date if the board so chooses. The URA, the board has full discretion on how much, to determine how much debt to issue and when the URA expires. So what I asked is we had staff have the city's debt financial advisor estimate the amount of debt that could be issued under the URA's current net property tax revenue, which is our property tax revenue after administrative, covering administrative expenses and also apply and allow us future growth of property tax revenue. Current net property tax revenue is about $714,000 per year. And there are two scenarios prepared, one called a full faith and credit, one called using just urban renewal revenue only. And we'll go through both of those. Scenario one, the full faith and credit means the city would actually issue the debt and pledge to pay the debt service if the URA does not have the funds to pay the debt service. This would require an IGA between the city and the URA to do that. Scenario two is urban renewal debt means the URA would issue the debt and the debt is solely covered by the URA tax increment revenues. The city has no obligation to pay the debt service in the event the URA cannot pay since the URA and the city are actually separate organizations. The debt repayment, we calculated it now through 2035 or a 10-year period, meaning the URA would have no debt past 2035, which was the original expiration date the URA board set when the plan was established. Amount borrowed was based on using all the net property tax revenue available for both scenarios. Like for example, a little deeper there for 20, for fiscal year 2024, 25, the URA net property tax revenue, as we says, $714,000. Approximately $320,000 has been budgeted in fiscal year 25, 24, 25 for storefront and building improvement program grants. However, this is an annual allocation and can be changed by the board. The city, we are going to issue debt, will look at, likely look at borrowing from a bank before issuing bonds. The process tends to be easier with a bank. And for probably smaller debt issuances like these, we can, we can use a bank instead of issuing bonds. So scenario one, the full faith and credit. The debt is secured by the city's full faith and credit pledge. That means if the URA can't cover it, the city will cover it somehow using whatever means it has. We use a 3% to 4% annual property, annual growth and tax increment revenue. The debt and pay, the debt service payments increase each year to match the projected operating revenue. The 3% estimate results in a debt issuance of about $6.41 million. The net funds for the, for the projects of about $6.24 million repayable by 2035. This results in annual debt payments of around $832,000 per year. 4% estimate results in the debt issuance of $6.83 million. The net, net funds for projects of $6.65 million repayable by that same time of 2035. This results in average annual debt payment of $890,000 per year. Okay, the full faith and credit, there are limitations on the full faith and credit financing agreements that would need to be included in any IGA. The limits are detailed on the next page, but to summarize them, there are conditions that need to be met. If the property is sold to a private party, one's got to be sold in cash and it has to be sold at fair market value. Two, the city will not take any action related to the project designed to benefit a specific product, specific party. We can, the URA can make changes on the site so long as this general change doesn't, it doesn't benefit anybody in particular. And three, the URA uses full faith and credit debt to make building improvement grants. The grants can probably only go to individuals and not to specific businesses. There's something, some constitutional limit there which, which vents that. But staff is working with bond council to determine how much flexibility there is with these limitations. And we're just gonna go right past that slide. You can read it in your own leisure if you would like. Scenario two, urban renewal debt. The debt's again is secured solely by the URA tax increment revenue. The debt structure to achieve level debt service, that means the payments are the same throughout the debt term. The debt service is based on 1.5 cover, 1.5 debt service coverage using the 24, 25 budgeted net operating revenue. But this means the lender requires the URA to have annual net property tax revenue of 150% of the debt service. For example, just keeping, if the debt service is $10 a year, the lender would require net property tax revenue of $15 per year. Doesn't mean you can't use that, the difference between the, between the 10 and the $15, for example, you just have, but you have to show that much gross revenue. You have to cover it as part of the debt coverage. The lender will likely also require a debt service reserve fund and our financial advisor estimated about $360,000. That way, there's some money already set aside in case for some reason property taxes go down one year. This results in a debt issuance of $3.6 million with annual net funds of about $3.1 million. And you get to that figure by taking the net issuance cost plus funding the debt service fund with the amount that you borrow. Annual debt service for this amount is $474,000. As you can see, that's not close to the $714,000 in net property revenue, but that's where that one and a half time, one and a half debt service requirement comes in. So this, again, that debt service coverage is an estimate. If the lender will allow a lower debt service coverage, we could potentially borrow more money. The debt service revenue, uh, reserve fund is typically required by a lender to ensure the funds are available to pay the debt service. Again, this could be something negotiable depending upon the lender. Maybe, maybe only negotiated away. They may require a smaller reserve. We'll just find out if we start working, we start working with lenders. The interest rate on the URA debt may be approximately half percent higher as there's less security than using the full faith and credit debt obligations. So. Next steps, the URA needs to determine how much of any it wants to borrow, which will help determine the type of financing to use. Using the urban renewal revenue debt may give the URA more flexibility as the limitations of using the full faith and credit financing are avoided. This also, this, this. Sorry, I'm like, Councilor, my mouth gets dry.
Contagious. I feel you, Paul.
Sorry about that. The decision on how much to borrow depends on how much of the annual net property revenue of $714,000 the board wants to commit to the annual debt service payments. Again, currently we budget about $320,000 for storefront and building improvement grant programs. This is the first year of the building grants program, so we don't know how much applications we're going to get for that program, which will leave about $394,000 per year to service debt payments. Again, this amount will increase annually as net property taxes increase either through the 3% growth or through new development. Did we get new development in the URA area? Next slide. So first question is, does the URA, the board want to use debt to fund the larger projects, i.e. to purchase or redevelop projects? Two, if yes, what type of debt, city, if full faith and credit or the one where the city issues or the URA? The board prefer, staff recommends using the URA debt method as it has fewer restrictions. And what time period, five or 10 years, staff recommends not issuing debt at this time past a 10-year repayment period? Unless the board wants to decide at this time, it wants to go past 2035. And how much of debt would the URA board like to issue, assuming we use the urban renewal revenue and a 10-year repayment? The URA has the capacity to issue approximately three and a half to four million dollars in debt.
So at this point, are we going through and answering these questions?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go bullet by bullet because I like doing it like that. So number, so the first bullet, uh, thumbs up or thumbs down. Does the board want to use that to fund larger projects, approach, like i.e., like an example to purchase or redevelop property? Thumbs up or thumbs down? Uh, okay. We got a consensus for yes. And then if yes, what type of debt, city or URA? I would, I mean, yeah, I feel like we have a URA for this very reason. Like, so to me, it's URA.
URA.
Okay. So URA, Paul. And, and then if yes, what time period would the board like to, to issue debt for? Five for 10 years?
10.
10.
Yep, 10. And then how much debt would the URA board like to issue, assuming using URR and a 10-year? What's, is that supposed to be URA and a 10-year?
Uh, urban renewal revenue is what they.
Okay. And a 10-year repayment period. The URA has the capacity to issue approximately 3.5 to 4 million in debt. Okay. Question from Council President Rippey for Paul.
So, uh, help me clarify this. So right now, we're using 300, we have budgeted $325,000 for these programs for building improvement.
For storefront and then the building improvement grants.
I understand. So the, well, at least that leaves the remaining 700, from the 714, it's 300 and whatever. Okay. But if we did use the full amount of the $714,000 to get debt, does that mean that the storefront programs go away or can we use some of that debt money?
For example, let's say you use the URA, you, you just do just URA financing and the, we'll use the example of the $714,000 right now.
Right.
The debt service would be about $474,000, which means you'd have about $240,000. You can still use that remaining $240,000 for storefront and building improvement grants. Right now, you would just probably, you'd have slightly smaller programs if you issued, depending on what your actual debt service was, but you still could use that money, that remaining money for the building improvement grants.
You could also use a portion of the debt to fund the building improvement program.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, you could do that as well.
You could use a portion. So in other words, in other words, if you, if you took advantage of the $714,000, you could actually uh, incur debt of more than 4 million.
It will depend on if you use the URA debt, how much the bank is going to require for the debt service coverage.
Correct. I understand that. I understand that. But, but we're saying 4 million, that's at the $470,000. But if you go to say 650,000, you could actually incur more debt.
Yes.
And still use the debt to pay. And still use the debt to pay for the building improvement.
Mm-hmm.
But, does everybody understand that?
Yep. No.
You're good, okay.
It's all going to come down to what the bank wants for the debt service.
So I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, that the store from, the store improvement stuff doesn't necessarily have to go away. We're just, we would just be taking the money from a different pot of money.
Yeah.
Right.
That's what I'm, but then you have more money to use for land purchase or something else.
And I guess the question is, if the bank requires a lower debt service ratio, does the U R A board want us to look at borrowing as much as we can within that debt service coverage amount?
So I guess in the, my, my end, mending comment then would be, I would like to see us, or I think it would be prudent for us to, um, take as much of our current revenue to apply toward a debt as the bank would allow. And, and then we could make up the difference with, uh, with the store improvement, building improvement with what's left of the seven hundred and fourteen thousand plus something out of the debt. As you say, let's say the, the, the payment for the, the loan is six hundred and fifty thousand. That still leaves you sixty four thousand dollars of the seven hundred and fourteen that's not being used.
Yeah.
And then you would just, if you have building improvements, you could
Yeah.
make up the difference. That's, that's my idea, that's my thought.
I think we should, I think we should utilize the debt. I mean, that's the whole point of the U R A. I mean, this is like exactly what we're supposed to be doing with it.
Yeah, because we get to the point, say, within the next couple of months where you're going to look at purchasing some property, we're going to need that cash on hand.
The, the three and a half to four million in debt was predicated on a one and a half assurance to the bank. If that percentage goes down to say one point four or one point three, that number can go up a little bit. It's doubtful that it will drop much lower than that because it's, it's a single revenue source. It's the Urban Renewal Agency, it's not backed up by other revenue sources. So Paul can correct me if I'm wrong, but if it goes down to around one point four, I think that's the four million number. If it goes down to one point three, it'd probably be around four and a half. Um, but I don't think that you would see it get more than that based on your recovery ratio of one point three to one point five.
I'm setting up a meeting with their, with a current bank that we use just to kind of see what they might require. But to kind of give me a feel for what other, them or other banks may want.
So is there consensus to move forward with that much debt issue or?
It will come back to you because you're going to have to authorize debt issuance resolution and everything.
Trying to give you some, like, it was, it was the last bullet, I was just trying to do what I was supposed to do.
Okay.
I just think it's very low risk, the revenue is going to come in, so it's not like we're speculating.
It's like good debt.
Yes.
There's a good debt and bad debt, this is good debt.
Okay. I think that should be, that, that should have been the last slide, I think. Yep.
Do you have what you need?
I have what I need from you, so we will move forward.
I'm going to adjourn this meeting of the Board of Directors for the U R A. Meeting adjourned. I would like, I would like to call to order, nope, is my microphone not working? Testing, testing. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Forest Grove City Council. The date is September twenty third, the time is seven twelve. Will the city recorder please call roll?
Councillor Gasserson, here. Councillor President Rippey.
Here.
Councillor Martinez.
Here.
Councillor Marshall.
Here.
Councillor Valenzuela.
Here.
Councillor Ewing.
Here.
Mayor Wenzel.
Here.
Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the land of the Tualatin Kalapuas who call themselves the Attilati. They are now part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron. Will the audience and the council please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Testing, I feel like this microphone is my least favorite, but Mariah hears it all the time, so I'll continue. Our pro, proclamations tonight, we are going to begin with banned book week. Whereas the, the freedom to read is essential to our democracy and is protected by our constitution. And whereas some persons work to remove or limit access to reading materials, to label views as controversial, to distribute lists of books or authors considered objectable, and to purge libraries of materials reflecting the diversity and history of our society. And whereas Americans favor free enterprise and ideas and expressions and can exercise critical judgment, recognize propaganda and misinformation, make their own decisions about what they read and believe, and exercise the responsibilities that accompany this freedom. And whereas intellectual freedom is essential to the preservation of a free society and a creative culture. And conformity limits the range and variety of inquiry and expression on which democracy, on which our democracy and culture depend. And whereas the American Library Association's banned book week is observed each year as a reminder to Americans not to take their freedom for granted. And whereas banned books week celebrates the freedom to choose and to express one's opinion, even if that opinion might be considered unorthodox or unpopular, and stresses the importance of ensuring the availability of different viewpoints to all those who wish to read them. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim September twenty second to September twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four as banned books week in Forest Grove, Oregon, and calls upon the people to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance.
All right. Proclamación, semana de los libros prohibidos, del veintiocho, del veintidós al veintiocho de septiembre de dos mil veinticuatro. Considerando que la libertad de leer es esencial para nuestra democracia y está protegida por nuestra constitución. Y considerando que algunas personas trabajan para eliminar o limitar el acceso a materiales de lectura, etiquetar puntos de vista como controversiales, distribuir listas de libros a autores considerados objetables y purgar bibliotecas de materiales que reflejan la diversidad y la historia de nuestra sociedad. Y considerando que los estadounidenses favorecen la libre iniciativa en materia de ideas y expresión. Y pueden ejercer un juicio crítico, reconocer la propaganda y la desinformación, tomar sus propias decisiones sobre lo que leen y creen y ejercer las responsabilidades que acompañan a esta libertad. Y considerando que la libertad intelectual es esencial para la preservación de una sociedad libre y una cultura creativa y que la conformidad limita el alcance y la variedad de investigaciones y expresiones de las que depende nuestra democracia y nuestra cultura. Y considerando que la semana de los libros prohibidos de la Asociación de Bibliotecas de Estados Unidos se celebra cada año como un recordatorio a los estadounidenses de que no deben dar por sentada su libertad. Y considerando que la semana de los libros prohibidos celebra la libertad de elegir y expresar la propia opinión, incluso si esa opinión puede considerarse o ortodoxa o impopular. Y enfatiza la importancia de garantizar la disponibilidad de esos puntos de vista diversos a todos los que deseen leerlos. Ahora, por lo tanto, el Consejo Municipal de la Ciudad de Forest Grove por la presente proclama los días del veintidós al veintiocho de septiembre del dos mil veinticuatro como la semana de los libros prohibidos. En Forest Grove, Oregon, y hace un llamado a la gente a unirse a sus conciudadanos de todo Estados Unidos para reconocer y participar en esta celebración especial, en testimonio de lo cual ha suscrito la presente y ha hecho que el sello de la Ciudad de Forest Grove, Oregon, se reemplace en este día veintitrés de septiembre, nuestra alcaldesa, Melinda Wenzel.
Our next proclamation is for National Arts and Humanities Month. Whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect and imagination of humankind. And whereas arts and humanities represents the freedoms of expression that empowers Americans to speak and think independently. We, okay, and creatively. And whereas arts and humanities play a crucial role in promoting individual well-being, connecting cultures, highlighting inequities and making communities healthier and stronger. And whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of art and cultural organizations, communities and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress for more than two decades. And whereas National Arts and Humanities Month focuses on equitable access to the arts, encourages participation in the arts, allows governments and businesses to show their support of the arts, and raises public awareness about the positive impact of the arts and humanities in our communities and lives. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim October two thousand twenty four as National Arts and Humanities Month in Forest Grove, Oregon, and calls upon the people to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance.
Proclamación, mes nacional de las artes y las humanidades. Considerando que las artes y las humanidades encarnan gran parte de la sabiduría, el intelecto y la imaginación acumulados de la humanidad. Y considerando que las artes y las humanidades representan la libertad de expresión que permite a los estadounidenses hablar y pensar de manera independiente y creativa. Y considerando que las artes y las humanidades desempeñan un papel crucial en la promoción del bienestar individual, la conexión de culturas, la puesta de relieve de las desigualdades y la creación de comunidades más saludables y fuertes. Y considerando que el mes de octubre ha sido reconocido como el mes nacional de las artes y las humanidades por miles de organizaciones artísticas y culturales, comunidades y estados de todo el país, así como por la Casa Blanca y el Congreso durante más de dos décadas. Y considerando que el mes nacional de las artes y las humanidades se centra en el acceso equitativo a las artes, fomenta la participación de las artes, permite a los gobiernos y las empresas mostrar su apoyo a las artes y aumenta la conciencia pública sobre el impacto positivo de las artes y las humanidades en nuestras comunidades y vidas. Ahora, por lo tanto, el Consejo Municipal de la comunidad, de la Ciudad de Forest Grove por la presente proclama a octubre del dos mil veinticuatro como mes nacional de las artes y las humanidades. En Forest Grove, Oregon, y hace un llamado a las personas para que se unan a sus conciudadanos en todo Estados Unidos para reconocer y participar en esta celebración especial, en testimonio de lo cual ha suscrito la presente y ha hecho que el sello de la Ciudad de Forest Grove, Oregon, se emplace en este día veintitrés de septiembre, dos mil veinticuatro. Nuestra alcaldesa, Melinda Wenzel.
Okay, moving on to our next agenda item, item agenda B, which is public comment. Time provided for anyone to speak, wishing to speak to the City Council on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda, but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed thirty minutes unless the majority of councillors present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand feature to be called on. Okay, so our first public comment is Mr. Dale Feek. Could you please come up to the chair and microphone, please? Our city recorder is passing out written public comment for Mr. Feek. I'm just giving a little.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Feek.
Chair Wenzel, uh, President Timothy Rippey and councillors, I'm Dale Feek. Started teaching in Forest Grove in nineteen sixty six and I taught in seven schools, started at Joseph Yale. I love Forest Grove. I sent, you have a summary of what I sent to the Washington County Commissioners. I made public comment on Tuesday and I'm going to make public comment, this on the Environmental Quality Commission on Friday. And I also sent it to you. And it relates to the data centers in Oregon, specifically Crane Data Center. And I sent this email on September the sixth. So I'm saying, please read an act to prevent data centers in Oregon, specifically Crane Data Center in Forest Grove, from becoming the nightmare that is described in September fifteenth, two thousand twenty four, New York Guest Essay by Sean Cooper, an attachment titled, "Noisy Hungry Data Centers Are Catching Communities by Surprise." And Myra's done a good job because she got this to you, but I looked at the minutes of today's meeting and the attachments are not there. So I hope you'll send the councillors those two attachments. Because what I have here is the summary of that attachment. And if you want to get the detail, you need to read the attachment. "The revolution in artificial intelligence has promised its breakthroughs in medical research." You can read on by yourself, I'm going to run out of time. So read that though, but there are five thousand data centers that power and keep the cloud above our digital world running. Residents rarely learn how data centers may affect their lives until it's too late. The tactics companies have deployed in recent years to build their massive data centers, networks are downright mercenary and regulators now need to step in to make sure the communities most affected by these industrial projects can learn about the, and evaluate them for themselves. At the moment, without those measures in place, residents and environmental groups have to go up against brick tech, very large tech. Brick tech firms largely on their own just to obtain basic details about water, energy and noise impacts. But protecting communities, the environment from malignant impact of data centers project won't spell the end of that. So please read it, please get the actual attachments and read it more in detail. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. There is no one else signed up to give public testimony, public comment? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to do so now? Seeing none, I will look online. Are there any Zoom attendees who would like to give public comments? Seeing none, we will move on to item C, the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will all be adopted with a single motion without separate discussion. Councillors who wish to remove an item from the consent agenda may do so prior to the motion. Any items removed will be discussed and acted upon following the approval of the remaining items. What is the wish of the council?
Move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, the consent agenda was moved by Council President Rippey and seconded by Councillor Marshall. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say aye. Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven two zero. Additions or deletions? City manager, do you have any additions or deletions?
No delete, no additions or deletions, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Any proposed by councillors? Seeing none, we will now move on to item E on our agenda presentations. The council will hold questions until the end of each presentation. A two minute reminder will be given to the presenter to conclude remarks. Our first presenters tonight are from the Public Arts Commission giving their annual report. And we have co-chairs, Ms. Dana Eaton and Emily Lux. Come on up, please. Hello, how are you guys doing? I'm doing well, thanks. Hola, ¿cómo están ustedes? Estoy bien, gracias.
Vamos a hacer una danza interpretativa, pero decidimos que esto sería más.
Cuando estés listo, puedes empezar.
Bien, vamos a tener un pequeño slideshow para ustedes. Vamos a empezar con, vamos a retroceder un poco. Queríamos terminarlo hace tiempo. Solo para traerlos de vuelta a 2022, cuando hicimos el festival mural. Trajimos cuatro murals nuevos a la ciudad de Alex Eichhoff, Ursula Barton, Marcy Kribble y Alison McCray. Linda Taylor también organizó carreras de carretera uno de los días y eso fue realmente, realmente genial. Lo pondré en el siguiente slide. Y las personas que vinieron realmente disfrutaron y fue una manera muy bonita de mostrarle a la gente el arte de nuestra ciudad.
Listo para el siguiente slide. Y solo para Dana, hemos retrocedido un poco porque muchos de nuestros proyectos son muy largos. Así que típicamente un proyecto que se manifiesta en un año ha sido planeado durante un año o más, o cuatro a veces. Así que Meet the Artist Dinner es una oportunidad realmente maravillosa para la comunidad para conocer diferentes artistas de diferentes disciplinas. Es a menudo una experiencia hands-on, así que generalmente hay un aporte o una performance o algo que alguien puede llevar con él, ya sea conocimiento o un objeto. La última vez, en el pasado, ha sido una fundación para la Comisión de Artes con actividades voluntarias pesadas, así que la persona que lo está presentando está voluntariando para servir comida y ese tipo de cosas. Y luego los artistas son típicamente personas de la comunidad. A veces es alguien que, por ejemplo, Ben Dyck creó la escultura y fue el artista de Meet the Artist Dinner para que la comunidad pudiera venir y ver parte de su proceso porque mucho de eso se pierde cuando solo ves el producto final. Recientemente tuvimos un Meet the Artist Dinner que se centraba en artes culinarias y fue, hicimos su cocina, y antes de eso tuvimos a Chesna Hawkins, que es una artista de color local, y ella hizo un demo para la gente, lo que fue genial. Y estamos listos para el próximo. Durante bastante tiempo, no estoy segura de cuál año comenzó, pero fue antes de que yo llegara y he estado diez años. Hacemos mini-grants y patrocinios para los pueblos locales, eventos locales y performances que cumplen ciertos criterios hasta $500. Así que típicamente uno de los principales criterios es que el evento o el performance debe ser libre para el público en ciertas capacidades, así que, ya sabes, cumple una de nuestras misiones de exponer a la gente a diferentes tipos de arte. La última vez hemos dado un mini-grant o un patrocinio al show 97116, que es un evento anual. Esto va a ser su séptimo año. Choc art, artes valle, y luego había un proyecto para Cornelius Elementary, que puedes ver en la parte inferior.
Así que este es el año pasado, 2023. Tuvimos una oportunidad interesante. Este artista, Michihiro, pasó y creo que era su nieto heredó todo su, todo su arte, y estaban saliendo de la propiedad donde todo estaba almacenado, y así decidió donar todas estas piezas a diferentes ciudades y entidades diferentes, y fuimos afortunados de ser elegidos como uno de ellos, gracias a Kathleen y Pat. Así que vinieron a buscar y seleccionaron seis piezas. Dos de esas piezas acabamos donando a Pacific University y les pusieron en Barbara's Garden. Renovaron ese espacio y estaban perfectos. Creo que el que está a la derecha es uno de los que fue allí. Dos fueron a Stites Park, que son los otros dos que estás viendo. Uno está justo allí en el patio, y luego otro estamos donando a Clearwater Services, y eso va a salir a Fernhill Wetlands pronto, creo, en los próximos años al menos. Así que empezamos a hacer el bazar de arte hace unos años, y el año pasado cambiamos el nombre y la idea de ello. Lo llamamos Fall into Art, así que todavía son artistas con booth. Lo hicimos en esta habitación el año pasado en conjunto con el show 97116 para tratar, ya sabes, para tratar de hacer actividades artísticas por toda la ciudad. Y este año estamos tratando de hacerlo en el mismo edificio en el que está el show 97116, así que eso va a ser incómodo si eso funciona. El año pasado tuvimos, creo, ocho o nueve artistas y muchos de ellos se pidieron que volvieran, así que eso nos aportó que hicieron bien y disfrutaron y que valió la pena para ellos estar allí.
Así que este es Seven Generations de Cat Tweedy. Este es uno de los proyectos que ha sido muy largo. Muchos de ustedes conocen la historia de fondo. Este proyecto comenzó en 2021 y fue justamente revelado oficialmente en septiembre 11. Todavía estamos trabajando en algunos componentes de seguridad, pero esta escultura es profundamente significativa. Este artista realmente fue dedicado a seguir por todo el proceso, que a menudo fue arduo. Pero el resultado final es tan hermoso, y creo que este en particular, creo, es algo que, quiero decir, se llama Seven Generations. El concepto con el que estaba trabajando fue la idea de que todas las decisiones que tomamos hoy deberíamos tener en cuenta cómo beneficiará a los siete generaciones en el futuro, cómo podemos levantar a la gente siete generaciones antes de nosotros. Y creo que es un concepto realmente increíble que todos deberíamos tener en cuenta con nuestras acciones aquí. Así que tuvimos una gran, fue bien atendido, revelación en septiembre 11, y ese es el resultado. Está justo entre, si no has visto, es justo entre la policía y la biblioteca.
Y este es otro esculto que estaba en contacto con los Siete Generaciones. Originalmente, en 2020, creo, hicimos una llamada para tratar de hacer una galería rotadora donde teníamos piezas de arte en loan de artistas, y cada dos años esos girarían para que estuvieran en diferentes locaciones, y no recibimos ninguna solicitud, así que tuvimos que rethinkar nuestro plan. Así que instalamos dos platos y luego hicimos una llamada para dos piezas diferentes de arte que vendríamos y manteníamos indefinidamente. Así que es de ahí que vienen estas dos. Y hicimos dos llamadas separadas porque el primero que acabamos de encontrar fue uno que realmente nos gustaba, así que hicimos una segunda llamada y ahí encontramos este. Y también tuvimos una revelación en agosto para Joshua Blewett, que es el artista de este, y vive en Ridgefield, Washington, así que es localmente. Sí.
El Festival de los Artes, particularmente, quiero decir, estoy emocionada por todo, pero el festival este año fue un proyecto piloto realmente increíble y fue una hermosa colaboración entre el PAC y Adelante, con apoyo de la ciudad y muchos, muchos, ni siquiera puedo realmente calcular cuántas horas voluntarias entraron en esto. Creo que esto es algo que podemos, con suerte, seguir en los próximos años. Es algo que, si no eres familiar, lo que creo que la mayoría de ustedes son, pero estamos aquí para reportar de todos modos, esto ocurrió durante cuatro meses separados en el primer miércoles de cada mes, y incluía básicamente un guión a muchos diferentes artistas, eventos artísticos, y había docenas de artes muy diferentes, diferentes tipos de artes que la gente podía experimentar. Así que lo bueno, creo, de eso es que a veces la gente se derrumbó, ya era en el mercado de los agricultores, así que a veces la gente se derrumbó en algo y de repente hay, ya sabes, un quarteto de barba, o bailarines, o, ya sabes, músicos, había escritores en el bosque, mucho de 2D arte, algunos 3D arte, y muchas, como diferentes booths y aportes que la gente podía hacer. Había clase de baile de baile que mi hijo asistió. Quiero decir, había una variedad realmente genial y fue muy bien recibida, y creo que es algo que podría realmente atraer a mucha gente. Creo que la mayoría de las personas que, basado en el feedback subcomité, la mayoría de las personas que participaron están realmente interesadas en hacer, ya están preguntando si vamos a hacer esto de nuevo, porque esto es uno de esos cosas que creo que podríamos realmente desarrollar en algo muy, incluso más bien atendido.
Y este es nuestro proyecto que acabamos de lanzar. Este es el edificio de baño en Lincoln Park. Tenemos ahora una llamada para un mural alrededor del edificio entero, y el tema es divertido, así que deberíamos conseguir algún museo realmente interesante. Y eso sucederá el próximo año, el verano, el pintado.
¿Cuestiones para el grupo? Consejera Valenzuela.
No tengo una pregunta, solo tengo un comentario. Fui capaz de asistir al evento de Siete Generaciones y solo quiero decir gracias por el trabajo que haces. He trabajado con ustedes, con ustedes, así que sé quién eres y el tipo de trabajo que haces. Y siento que te has levantado nuestra ciudad y quiero decir gracias por eso, porque tengo una hermana que va a crecer aquí y te agradezco por lo mucho que vas a contribuir.
Gracias por venir. ¿Algo más? Sí, quiero decir un par de cosas. Así que a veces cuando haces un trabajo como este y te dices, oh, deberías ir a la comisión, solo hay dos reuniones, solo hay tantos horas, solo esto, solo eso, y así he oído que con las comisiones, solo se reúnen una vez al mes y es una reunión de hora, tal vez dos horas, pero he estado en varios comisiones diferentes para la ciudad en los diez años que he hecho este trabajo, y este grupo, la Comisión de Artes Públicas, esto es un trabajo de trabajo de trabajo de trabajo, mucho más horas. Quiero decir, recuerdo el primer año que fui el aliado y tuvimos una retiro en la casa de alguien, y Linda Taylor tenía, ni siquiera estoy exagerando, diez blinders de minutos de cada reunión. Y creo que, ya sabes, y todo es realmente estratégico. Las donaciones de las esculturas, miraron el mapa de Forest Grove y dijeron, la representación geográfica importa, es por eso que Fernhill está obteniendo uno, es por eso que hay uno en Pacific, es por eso. Quiero decir, es, es solo el cuidado, puedes sentirlo, el cuidado, el amor, el tiempo, el esfuerzo, es solo, y luego ganamos en el desarrollo económico y la gente viniendo aquí y la gente disfrutando de nuestra comunidad, y así que, de todos modos, creo que este grupo es muy bueno. Así que gracias por todos los horas adicionales que tú voluntarias por nuestra ciudad. Gracias, gracias. Bien, y número dos, tenemos otro gran nonprofit que apoya a nuestra ciudad, la Fundación de la Biblioteca, y tenemos al vicepresidente de la Fundación de la Biblioteca, Linda Sari. ¿Encontré su nombre final correctamente? Bien, vamos. ¿Quieres, Colleen, estás acercándote o no? Solo Linda. Tú estás bien, Linda, ¿verdad? Bien, vamos.
Buenas noches a todos.
Buenas noches.
La Fundación de la Biblioteca de Forest Grove usaba hacer algunas presentaciones al Consejo Municipal de la ciudad en una base regular probablemente dos veces al año. No hemos hecho eso en mucho tiempo, así que, dado que muchos de ustedes probablemente no saben mucho sobre la Fundación, te daré un poco de historia. En noviembre de 1998, los votantes de Forest Grove aprobaron una medida de 2.2 millones de dólares de acuerdo para expandir el edificio de 1978. Lo dobló en tamaño y la construcción terminó en 2002. Pero la medida de acuerdo era solo para la expansión del edificio. No había dinero para el wing exterior original de la biblioteca. Cuando pones una expansión en tu casa, puedes ver dónde se detiene la parte antigua de tu casa y dónde comienza la nueva. Y si, a menos que remodeles la parte antigua para combinar con la nueva, y así es lo que necesitábamos hacer. Así que en marzo de 2001, la Fundación de la Biblioteca de Forest Grove formó con líderes de la comunidad para levantar dinero para hacer eso con un objetivo de $1 millón. Ese fue un objetivo formidable en ese momento, pero pensamos que podríamos hacerlo y lo hicimos. Los miembros del Consejo actual incluyen a Mike Moore, Bill Ruder, Mike Smith, Kathy Mandis, Patrice Civek, Pete Truax y recientemente retirado el presidente Rod Featon. Han habido seis o ocho otros que han estado en el Consejo en los últimos 23 años, pero todos se fueron por varias razones, o se pasaron, o la vida se fue en el camino, como a menudo pasa. Sí. Un año después, en 2002, formamos el Cabinet de Campañas de Apoyos de la Biblioteca y se reunieron todos los fines de semana durante más de un año, más de dos años probablemente. Hostaron docenas de eventos, contactos, reuniones de casa, raffles, ofertas, desfiles, eventos de Maggie's Buns. Para aquellos que no saben, Maggie Pike usaba un restaurante a distancia de Pacific University y la iglesia. Hace lo mejor, todavía hace lo mejor, los buns de cinnamón, y es muy, muy orientada a la comunidad todavía. El Cabinet de Campañas también hostó un torneo de golf. La Fundación de la Biblioteca de Forest Grove estaba por todas partes. De 2002 a mayo de 2006, la Fundación de la Biblioteca de Forest Grove levantó 1.3 millones de dólares de fondos para empresas, familias y individuos. Un tercio de fondos para las empresas, un tercio de las empresas, un tercio de las familias y individuos. Donaciones de $1.000 de personas, donaciones de $25. Los niños traían sus carretas a la biblioteca. Había una jarra de donaciones en el cuarto de check-out. Teníamos un termómetro actualizado en la biblioteca para mostrar nuestro progreso. La ciudad asignó $187.000 de fondos de apoyo a la biblioteca que consistían en peticiones y donaciones mantenidas en este, manteniendo por años para el uso futuro en la biblioteca. Tuvimos un don de $100.000 de donaciones del Sociedad de Ciencias Cristianas, que se dirigía a la renovación del wing occidental de la biblioteca y la compra de un piano grande. El piano está ampliamente usado ahora para recital y eventos bibliáticos. Hay muchos maestros de biblioteca, o maestros de piano en el área. Y así, no soy una persona de piano, pero supongo que hay una gran diferencia entre tocar un piano de pie derecho y un piano grande. Y así estos niños, a veces, ya sabes, niños pequeños, niños pequeños, llegan a la biblioteca y toman lo que aprendieron en un piano grande y son, son sólidos. Es genial. Así que la renovación de la biblioteca fue completada en 2007. Desde entonces, la Fundación ha levantado fondos para muchas campañas. Dickensberg Memorial Garden, con un mural proporcionado por la Comisión de Artes Públicas. La Malla de Moli de Ed Carpenter, arte en memoria de su madre Molly, con Eric Cannon y Greg Kribble, que hicieron los pilares. Está justo en el, cuando entras, la entrada del frente o de atrás de la biblioteca, es la cosa de vidrio arriba y es genial. Renovación de la sala de rostro y otros proyectos más pequeños. Recientemente, la Fundación recibió una donación de $50.000 de memorial para el área de los niños. El donador local quiere que el área sea whimsical e invitante, y el personal está trabajando en ese concepto ahora. Se formó un consejo de adolescentes en 2016 con tres miembros. Ahora tienen más de 30. La nueva zona de adolescentes fue desarrollada cerca de la mesa principal, con la Fundación comprando furniture apropiado y una partición de vidrio está llegando en las próximas semanas para terminar esa zona de adolescentes. No será acondicionado y no es que nosotros adultos no podamos entrar allí, pero es su habitación. Quiero decir, sabes cómo los adolescentes son, no ofende a nadie. Dickensberg vivió en Cornelius y fue un abogado de inmigración local. Fue muy involucrado con los amigos de la Biblioteca de Forest Grove y la Fundación durante muchos, muchos años, y fue un ser humano maravilloso. Cuando murió de repente en 2015, en consulta con su esposa Rosalie y su hijo Brian, la Fundación decidió construir un jardín de memorial justo afuera de la puerta sur de la biblioteca. Eric Cannon diseñó un arroyo de metal al jardín, y a través de la Comisión de Artes Públicas, Marcy Kribble, un artista local, diseñó un hermoso mural grande, que viste en la presentación anterior. La Fundación y los amigos de la biblioteca pagaron por los plantings y la irrigación en el jardín. Actualmente, estamos ahora discutiendo cómo la ciudad, la Fundación y el grupo de amigos pueden trabajar juntos para mantener el jardín para tener éxito continuo. La Fundación también está trabajando en conseguir un ejército de sembrar así que estaré en contacto si alguno de ustedes está interesado en eso el próximo verano. La Fundación ha hablado de un vehículo de reconocimiento de donantes durante 15 años. Justo hace unos meses, Carrie Van der Zandt y un arquitecto local se involucraron para ayudarnos con este proyecto. Estamos muy emocionados por ello. So when you go in the library and you look at the Molly's Garden art, which is up above, the pillars that hold it up are made of wood by Greg Kribel and metal by Eric Cannon. So if you picture these and they're like, they're big at the top and they go down this way. So if you picture that, picture it upside down. So our donor recognition vehicle is going to be a pillar exactly like that. And then there's going to be, it's like a bookshelf. And on these bookshelves are going to be slats that look like bookspines. And on the spines are going to be names of donors. And then, and then, and other places, and there's four sides of it. So there's a lot of donor names and on other sides of it, there will be some other, you know, history of the foundation and of the library. We're all in the planning stages right now of that piece of art and we're very excited about it. Throughout my talk, I've told you about different projects that involve others and all of them have a Forest Grove connection. Metal artist Eric Cannon, wood artist Greg Kribel and his daughter, artist Marcy Kribel, international artist Ed Carpenter. His mother Molly was a Forest Grove Library supporter. And I believe they grew up, he grew up in the Gales Creek area. I'm not supposed to. And Carrie Van der Zandt and the architect lives in Forest Grove and visits the library often. The foundation always tries to keep things local if we bring in someone to some artistic or crafty kind of thing, try to keep it local. The library is fortunate to have three groups of supporters, the Library Foundation, the Friends of the Library, and the Library Commission. Almost every year, we have a gathering of the groups to discuss common concerns and share our goals and accomplishments. We also invite city council members. This year's gathering is set for Sunday, October 6, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the library. Refreshments will be available and I hope you all will join us. Forest Grove Library Foundation has contributed more than $1.5 million in donations, secured grants, and in-kind contributions to the city's library since 2001 for the past 23 years. Forest Grove Libraries Foundation is a thriving, successful community or organization, and we ain't going anywhere.
Any questions? Any questions for Linda? I don't have a question, I just have a comment. So thank you for your presentation and thank you and the rest of the volunteers. Oftentimes, we just actually had a work session earlier tonight and we have really difficult, I mean, everyone has difficult decisions, but funding things can be really difficult when you live off a city levy, right? And so when I think of the Library Foundation, to me, you're like, the city is like, you just help us so much. Like, we have to put our revenue towards the basic needs, the services. And then sometimes there's gaps that we would like to fill that we can't fill. And I feel like you're our guardian angels that come in and say like, hey, we'll help with the furniture in the teen library section. Hey, we'll help finish this west side. Or, right, we'll do this portion and we'll bring in this art. So I think that I agree with what you're saying, that the groups that the library has are so strong and so valuable, the Library Commission, the foundation, and the Friends. And so I just hope that we can all come and celebrate these great volunteers on October 6. Share food, share stories, and maybe check out a book. I guess we won't be able to because it'll be closed, but you can come back later.
Yeah. And that was, when we started, that was part of our mission. Mission statement is that we're not going to supplant or, you know, take the place of any city funds because it is the city library. But like you said, there are a lot of things that the city can't afford. And that's where we come in.
Great, well, thank you.
I also have, the foundation has been doing a newsletter twice a year, April and September, for a couple of years now. And I just, tonight mailed this one. If you're on the list and you get it in your mailbox, it's because you're a previous donor. I don't think any of these names were on the list. So here's a, here's a foundation newsletter.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Thank you so much. Our next presentation is on the watershed fire response. And I'm going to invite our fire marshal, Mr. Dave Neymeyer, and our fire chief, Jim Gearing. And Matt Johnson. Sorry, Matt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Good evening, council members. Thanks for having us tonight to share some information with you. This summer, we had a fire event in the watershed area. And I really appreciate Matt and Dave for their dedication to our city and our fire department on their day off on the weekend. They heard that call and responded to it. Dave was there for much of the day, providing with updates. And Matt responded and put our drone, our fire department drone up in the air and was the eye in the sky for ODF, which was very helpful. So Dave is here, he's drawn up the summary of what occurred that day and he's going to share that information with you today.
I think first off, it's really rare for us to do a presentation on fires that are an eighth of an acre in size, right? And we do a dozen of those during a typical fire season. What we don't do very often is have any sort of fire activity in the watershed, right? It's a, it's secure, it doesn't have the public access. And of course, human behavior is what causes an overwhelming majority of our wildfires here in Northwest Oregon, until events like this happen. And the pretty rare, especially the lightning storm we had that morning was a rather dry one. And then, of course, we ended up with some smoke. Okay, perfect. So this was a really straightforward, you know, lightning storm. It was well predicted, we knew it was coming. We started with some other incidents that morning that were in the rural fire district. These fires were actually outside of our rural fire district. These were in the forest lands protected by the Oregon Department of Forestry. So as you were aware, these happened on the morning of August 17. Probably around noon on August 17, the first smoke column was visible coming from the wooded area to the southwest of the Gales Creek community. The Oregon Department of Forestry had an engine as well as a 10-person hand crew from the Oregon Department of Corrections, South Fork Forest Camp. They went into the watershed in an attempt to locate the column of smoke. Matt joined them shortly after. And then he requested with, to respond with them, our seasonal fresh rig crew that we share with the city of Cornelius. And then the additional chief officer responses that came in as well. While they were in there en route for the first fires, when they noticed a second column of smoke, at that point, Matt put his drone in the air and got the coordinates for that, that second column of smoke, located it. It was considerable. The hike into that was 4,000 or 5,000 feet. Over like one ridge, down another, up another ridge. It was something like 700 feet of elevation gain and then drop and then gain again to get to it, which posed some significant challenges for the forestry crews that had to extinguish that fire. The first fire was located probably 600 to 700 feet off of the road, off of one of the roads in the watershed. And the forestry crew, as well as the corrections department crew, went down into that little canyon and had that fire lined rather quickly. That second fire took quite a bit of hiking into to get to. And then again, once they did find it, they found, you know, each of these were about an eighth of an acre. This was the second fire. And because of that distance, the distance that I spoke of earlier, they weren't able to pump water directly from a fire engine. So the forestry crew set up, you can see in the center of the photo there, it's a portable pump. They had to hike that in on their back. And then they sit that up directly into Roaring Creek, Roaring Creek being one of our water sources. In order to protect our water source, the forestry crews did a fantastic job. They had a little rubber bladder basically that goes around that portable pump. No gasoline, no oil, no firefighting foams were used in any of that effort. And then the little rubber bladder prevented any leaking fuel and leaking oil from getting into the Roaring Creek source. Both of these fires were well above the intakes for the watershed, for the drinking water sources. So there was no immediate threat at any time to the drinking water. On the right there, you can see one of the lightning strike trees. One of the things I think was really interesting about this is lightning fires, of course, are pretty rare for us in Northwest Oregon, we just don't get them very often. When we do, at least in my career, they tend to be kind of confined to that tree. So this was pretty rare, in my opinion, and a kind of a telltale sign of just how dangerous this fire season was and still is. But this was kind of the tail end of the high peak of the fire danger. And for a fire to start in a tree like that, in deeply wooded timber, you know, and then spread as rapidly as it did, very fortunate situation that these happen in the daylight, were able to be seen quickly, able to be attacked quickly. And not, you know, a lot of times our lightning storms in the summer come in at night. So this one, we had a lot of situations in our favor. On the left, there is one of Matt's drone photos. And on the right, you can see one of the large trees that was actually actively burning. The forestry crews did have to follow a couple of trees that were on fire. There's no way around that, that prevents, if you have fire burning up high in a tree, of course, any wind or anything is going to blow those embers considerably outside of your fire line. So following those trees is really the only option you have, you know, outside of digging the fire line and creating more damage well away from it. The forestry crews, the corrections crews got on these really quickly, really aggressively. They were joined by employees from the Stimson Lumber Company, Stimson being the adjoining property to the south and to the west. So they were able to get in there and get these down really quick. And then, of course, if you recall, that afternoon and evening, an even stronger series of storms came in and the crews all had to be pulled out, you know, for the purpose of safety. I think that's it. All right.
Any questions or do you have more to say, Dave?
No, I think that was, that was it. Both these were limited to about an eighth of an acre, in total, a quarter acre. Again, quarter acre fires are our bread and butter throughout the summer. But these being in the watershed, we felt it was appropriate to at least make you aware of them and chat about it.
Any questions? I have a question. So with our watershed, when there is a, you know, on the forecast, you guys do a really good job of checking that and keeping us updated. But when there is like lightning storms, like who spotted that fire first? And how do we kind of keep an eye on it? Do we know?
Yeah, I don't.
Was it called into you or?
That the forestry went into first?
Forestry was checking lightning strikes.
Yeah.
And then people were starting to call from all over. Of course, the high school could see it, David Hill and Gales Creek. And then there was people along Highway 6.
Oh, cool.
It was kind of a mess to figure out.
Interesting. Any other questions or comments? I appreciate the report, it was really good. Did you put this together by yourself?
Yeah, this was, yeah.
I love it, it's real good. Good job, Dave, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, we're going to move on to item F, which is Public Hearings, Ordinances, and Resolutions. The public hearing for ordinance 2024-06 is now open. If approved by the city council, this ordinance will grant a franchise for Fat Beam LLC to conduct a telecommunications business and a grant, and grant a right to use public rights of way within the city. Do any councils have any conflicts of interest to declare? Seeing none. Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, Mr. Paul Downey, will present the staff report.
Good evening. Fat Beam is requesting a franchise from the city as it plans to build a fiber optic network to serve the Forest Grove School District and its schools. The city attorney and city staff have prepared a franchise agreement based on prior telecommunications franchises approved by the city for your consideration. Construction of this network will begin if this franchise is granted. They may also eventually offer services to other businesses that are along this fiber optic network route. It's also negotiated poll use agreements with the line power that you rent space on its poles and which will be signed if this franchise is granted. First franchise will be a non-exclusive franchise, meaning other companies provide the same services. The length of the franchise is supposed to be five years or until the city establishes a right-of-way ordinance, whichever comes first. This franchise is not a grant, Fat Beam has the authority to provide cable services, which have to be negotiated with Metropolitan Area Communications Commission. And the franchise agreements list what Fat Beam's obligations are with respect to operating with the right-of-way, such as temporarily or permanently relocating their cable in the right-of-way at their cost when needed. It did request significant changes to the definition of franchise revenue and how that revenue would be determined. That's not unusual when you're doing negotiations. It would have restricted the amount of franchise revenue we're collecting. Staff rejected Fat Beam's proposed language changes and told them the proposed franchise language in this ordinance is consistent with the language in other similar agreements granted by the city. So the city didn't wish to make changes to the language for consistency among franchises. Franchise fee will be an annual fee of 5% of its gross revenues earned, less bad debts in the operation of facilities and of the provision of telecommunications services within the city. We don't know how much franchise revenue will be collected yet because we don't know what fees they're going to be charging the school district for. And the light power department will also receive revenue from pole attachment rental fees for the use of city's light poles. Staff recommends the city council approve the attached ordinance and I'll answer any questions council may have.
Does council have any questions for staff? Seeing none. I will now call in persons who signed up to comment on the ordinance. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Are there any proponents? Seeing none. Is there anyone online? Nope, okay. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Anyone wishing to give other testimony? Seeing none. The hearing is now closed. Is there a motion from the council to approve the ordinance?
I move that we approve ordinance 2024-06.
Ordinance 2024-06 was moved by Council Martinez and seconded by Council Valenzuela. Is there any discussion from the council? Seeing none. Will the city manager please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 2024-06, granting a franchise for Fat Beam LLC, a Washington Limited Liability Company, to conduct a telecommunications business and granting a right to use public rights of way within the city.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call the roll vote?
Council Gasserson?
Yes.
Council President Rippe?
Yes.
Council Martinez?
Yes.
Council Marshall?
Yes.
Council Valenzuela?
Yes.
Council Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Ordinance number 2024-06 is advanced to a second reading by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of 7 to 0. Okay, moving on to F2. The public hearing for resolution 2024-39 is now open. If approved by the city council, this resolution will adopt findings to support an exemption from competitive bidding requirements for the Public Works Administration Building, declare said exemption, and authorize a process to award such a contract. Do any counselors have a conflict of interest to declare? Seeing none. Public Works Director Gregory Robertson will now present the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Greg Robertson, Director of Public Works. Before you is a resolution to allow city staff to utilize a alternate project delivery method to use the construction manager, general contractor form as opposed to the typical waterfall project delivery of sequencing. waterfall project delivery of sequencing, of going through and doing design, and then putting it out for bid. This actually integrates the construction manager and general contractor in the design at the very beginning. And we are in the process right now of wrapping up schematic design and are now moving into the next phase of design development, where we will get really serious about a lot of the details. And this project, we've been working on for the last six months, and it is to rehabilitate the Public Works Administration Building over on 23rd, and also provide some expansion. The architects we're working with have highly recommended that we utilize this method of delivery. Used to be kind of new and shiny. Now it's become more mainstream and has shown and demonstrated cost savings that can be realized by bringing the contractor in early and working through design issues. And also, in terms of during construction, things are a lot clearer and quite a few less surprises. So I've developed a staff report for it and proposed resolution under the guidance of Paul, who's done several of these. I've been at this 38 years, and this is going to be my first one. I'm actually kind of excited to try it out. And as I mentioned, right now, we are at that point where it is time to, if we're going to use a CMGC method, now is the time to bring them onboard. It's the appropriate timing between phases, and will realize us the greatest advantage. So our recommendation is that you authorize city staff to utilize a alternate delivery method of CMGC for this project.
Are there any questions from the council for staff? Counselor Gusterson?
Is this type of strategy used in other cities?
Yes. It's become commonplace and really reduces exposure to cost overruns and eliminates a lot of the surprises during construction.
Counsel President Rippey?
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Just had a question about the timeline. When do you anticipate the construction to start or the remodeling to start? And when do you expect it to begin?
The plan right now is to ready the project for bidding February or March of this next year. Construction will take approximately nine months.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I will now call on persons who signed up to comment on the resolution. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Any persons wishing to give other testimonies? Seeing none. The hearing is now closed. Is there a motion from council to approve the resolution?
I move to approve resolution 2024-39.
I'll second. Okay, resolution 2024-39 was moved by Counsel Gusterson and seconded by Counsel Martinez. Is there any discussion from the council? Counselor, Counsel President Rippey?
Thank you. Yeah, I think that this methodology that we're using now for some of these contracts, projects, is best practice. It's the kind of best practice that we used in the manufacturing industry 25 years ago when I worked for John Deere, and we designed new engines and things. We brought suppliers in to make sure the design was accurate and manufacturable at the least possible cost. So it works. It's worked in the manufacturing industry for years now, decades. So I'm glad to see that this kind of practice is brought to municipal governments that can take advantage of designing things accurately and cost effectively. I just think it's a great methodology. Makes a lot of sense.
Any further discussion? Okay, will the city manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution 2024-39, adopting findings to support an exemption from competitive bidding requirements for the Public Works Administration Building remodel and expansion, declaring such exemption and authorizing a process to award a construction manager, general contractor CMGC contract.
Thank you. Is there any final discussion from the council before we proceed with the roll call vote? Seeing none. The city recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Gusterson?
Yes.
Counsel President Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Ewing?
Yeah.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. In a vote of seven to zero, the Forest Grove City Council has approved resolution 2024-39. Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Okay, moving on to council communication, I believe? Yep. Council communication. We'll do our council reports. We'll start with Council President Rippey.
Thank you. The Economic Development Commission met on September 12th. There was really no significant item on the agenda. They are looking forward to the economic opportunities analysis to be completed for their end so that they can review that. I think that will be done pretty soon, within the next month or so. The TV Highway Steering Committee met on September 12th as well and discussed the process and outcomes for public engagement regarding the project's plan on that. This is the project for improving safety and rapid transit along TV Highway from Beaverton to Forest Grove. There will be a draft of an LPA, and I forget what that stands for, sent to the cities in November, so in another month or so, with an expected approval by council in November. So this is an agreement, and this agreement is going to include the expectation and commitment for local funding. So the TV Highway project, the entire project, is estimated to be around $300 million. Three hundred and fifty of that, they're hoping to get funded through federal sources. And the remainder, 150, are just going to get split up between different groups. And of that 150 million, they did not have a specific number when I asked. So we do not know right now what we're going to be asked to commit to in November to help pay for the 150, you know, so.
Mike, they're going to come and ask us to commit to paying, but they're not going to tell us what we're committing to?
No, I'm not saying that. They didn't have the number at that time.
Oh, okay.
Okay? But I'm bringing it to your attention because we don't know the number yet. And so of the 150 million that's supposed to be locally funded, 50 million of that is going to come from the municipalities, Beaverton, Hillsborough, and Forest Grove, and Cornelius. So that's what they're anticipating. It's all going to be decided by the size of the cities. So Beaverton and Hillsborough obviously will pay more. Who knows whether Cornelius will pay anything? And Forest Grove will be asked to pay something. The reason I'm bringing this up is not only are we going to be expected to approve this agreement, but it's got to be baked into our budget. And the expectation is, is that we will be able to provide the funds in 2027.
When is our, our levy doesn't expire until 2028, right? So that's just not a long enough.
So I'm just.
I mean, I'm just, I mean, just like to take, can you take that back to the committee? Like Forest Grove lives off a five-year operational levy? So we need, I mean, if there's an expectation that we contribute our fair share, which I understand, right? Then there has to be a reasonable amount of time to allow us to, I mean, we're unique in the region that we literally survive off an operational levy. Not every municipality has that, that situation that we have.
Okay. The other thing is, is that I am sure staff is going to get involved in this before the next steering committee gets, meets. But I'm letting you guys know because I'm not sure the next steering committee will meet before I'm off council. Okay, so you need to be aware that this is going on. And you also, and the other thing is, and I have talked to the city manager about it, and we're hoping that they will agree that the $850,000 we got from the feds can go toward our portion of what this project is going to look for.
But wait, what if we already had, is that, what the project's looking for, though, is rapid transit? And so if we put in a mid-block crossing, and if we fix you, the intersection, you, inform me more, Jesse.
Not that it would be obligated toward that project, but that it might be able to count as if we spend it on the local projects that we discussed, U Street, the crossing.
Yes, okay.
That that would count toward a potential match for any other improvements on the highway, but not necessarily be spent on those types of improvements.
Okay, so we're asking for that. Okay, for that kind of like trade. And they're not meeting in October?
I'd have to look.
Can you keep me in the loop?
They usually meet every month.
Oh, they don't meet every month? Not at this point, when they're starting to like talk money? Okay, can you keep me in the loop so I can, you know, try, we can do a transitioning, and I'll jump back on that? I think it sounds like a lot of important stuff.
I was, I was rather, I won't say upset, but the idea that they didn't have a number for us, and then they expected us to agree to it by November, is just, this is not the way to do business.
Wait.
You know, and, you know, there, it's just ridiculous. Anyway, that's, I'll keep my mouth shut. Next, the Chamber obviously successfully hosted the corn roast this past Saturday. They are still continuing to develop a small business hub. I think they're working with Oregon Business, and to, because the closest small business hub currently is in Gresham. And so we need to have one out here at this end of the county. The Chamber is going to host that or create that so that'll serve western Washington County. They held several grand, or not several, they held a couple of grand openings, but ribbon-cutting ceremonies. One was for Urban River Spirits, and the other was for Willow and Ash. Both businesses are on Main Street. They continue to increase the number of members they have. The vitality and vibrancy of the Chamber is the best I've ever seen it since I've been on council. So hats off to the, to those folks, not only to the staff, but to the board there. The next scheduled meeting for the Regional Water Providers Consortium is not until October 9th, and the EDC is on October 10th. So those are my next meetings. And I either volunteered or attended at the 9/11 ceremony, the big flag. I attended the Seven Generation Sculpture Dedication, participated in the sidewalk car cart, and the corn roast. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Counselor Gusterson?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Counsel, Counselor Marshall?
The forestry committee meeting was basically on what the presentation was for the street trees. That's what we covered, or was covered mostly in that. As far as parks and rec, we didn't dig too deep into the agenda. There's a lot of conversation with a community member that had joined the meeting with the D study. So that took up the majority of the meeting. But they did go over a handful of little stuff here and there. The swim, the aquatic center, the hot tub is under repair. No official timeline for reopening that. Their coordination of on, of the swim events has transferred over to Cody for recreation. Team for planning purposes in several sessions are open now for registration with the school district. Most projects are complete. NAMSTRAC will be repaired in November. Cornelius is on schedule, and they're starting to install new playground equipment at all the schools. And Parks and Rec website, informationally updated to reflect the launch of fall programming, changing new classes offering.
Great, thank you. Counselor Martinez?
So I attended, we had another sister city committee meeting this last week, and just finalizing a schedule. We have a list of the students and adults that will be coming to Forest Grove. And have, we do have families that will be hosting them while they're here. Pacific University is going to take care of the celebration dinner. The menu is finalized. Everything is really coming together well. There's also Lynda Allen from Valley Art. She sent everyone several pictures of some paintings as potential gifts for the delegation.
Thank you. Counselor Ewing?
Yes, so as you know, the ATM is going to be on the 28th from 10 to 2, excuse me, from 10 to noon, and that will be at the auditorium. The topic is transportation, getting around the Grove. The teams worked really hard on that, put together some really great speakers and information. So I hope that everybody in the community that's interested in transportation in Forest Grove will be able to attend. There'll be a light coffee and, I think, pastries to start the meeting on. And then directly after that is going to be the Forest Grove Oktoberfest in the downtown area. I'll let Counselor Donna continue on with that information if she'd like. Forest Grove, as I mentioned, the Right Connection contract is currently being reviewed because it hasn't been re-upped for a while. And they really want, their main thing to talk with them about is parking concerns. They went from three vehicles to 13 vehicles, which is wonderful for the community, but parking around the senior center is creating some difficulties. So that will no doubt be part of their conversation with Right Connection. Their newsletter is completed and should be out for the end of the year. I wasn't aware of this, so I'll pass it on to the community. The senior center keeps a durable medical supply shop shack on the property, and that is for free medical things like gowns and masks and porta-potties, those types of things. And you can go in and sign up and take those away as you need them. I thought that was kind of interesting. I was not aware. First Friday dinner will be October 4th at 5:30. That's when the dinner will begin. I think they talked about, you know, people showing up about 5:00, but that's when the actual dinner service will begin at 5:30. Also, October 19th is going to be a meeting of the gardeners. It's a conference that's going to be held at the senior center, and it's about food resources and gardening and bringing everybody together to really work hard on sustainable food for the Forest Grove population. Also, the senior center decided to move its monthly meetings. It was becoming difficult with the time set, so it's now been moved to the third Wednesday from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. of the month. And that, of course, is going to be at the senior center. Also, I wanted to mention their budget. They have $350,000 at Edward Jones, $32,000 in CD. So those dollars are things. So those dollars are things that will need to be discussed uh with the sil- with the city and the senior center on how those dollars uh, if they're going to be dispersed, if possibly they're going to be having a senior center uh or a senior foundation that would use more of those dollars for programs and those types of things. They uh also have new games, new bingo games. So uh, I wasn't aware that there were so many different varieties of bingos, guys. But anyway, they've added a couple of new ones. So anybody interested in uh bingo, they do have some new types of games that they're highlighting. Also, I wanted to mention uh the Housing Supportive Services Network, uh, which is really kind of the conglomeration of all the housing and services in Washington County. They have a meeting on October second from eight thirty to ten in the morning. You can zoom it uh, which uh is going to be talking about domestic violence awareness, solutions on housing and uh needs in the community. Uh, they have a lived experience subcommittee that comes together and talks about housing and their lived experience in the community uh being without uh shelter. And then they're also doing a health and housing update. I wanted to mention that uh HUD has released funding notice for C O C, which is Continuum of Care to create new units for per- uh permanent housing. Uh, there's a grant that is uh in the works for Washington County and it's going to be for five million dollars. Once all of that uh is worked out, then they will put that uh, those dollars out for uh proposal bids. And it will uh highlight cu- uh building programs in our community. I still kind of keep my fingers into the housing uh issues in uh the county. And this is probably one of the better groups to uh keep you overall informed. Um, since I won't be returning, uh, it would be nice that we had a partnership with this particular group as they are, like I said, kind of the coalescence of the housing issues in Washington County. Thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you, councillor Ewing. Councillor Valenzuela?
Thank you, mayor. Um, all right, so uh Jesse's report has an incredible amount of information about the library. And we also had Linda's presentation about the Library Foundation. So all I will ask is, uh, I really hope to see you at the gathering of groups on October sixth. Uh, I will certainly uh be there. Um, uh, I attended the policy advisory board uh meeting also. And uh, what we did was, uh, we received the consolidated plan, the draft of the consolidated plan, two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-nine. And what I'm going to do, I'm going to share with you this PowerPoint because there is a great amount of information in terms of uh all the community engagement that they have done throughout the county uh for the different needs that the county may have, particularly for housing. A lot of demographic information um of, of the participants. Uh, but also other, uh, other information, but it is a very long uh PowerPoint. So what I want to uh emphasize this evening are the new goals and objectives that have been added for this next sprint, uh, two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-nine. These are the new goals uh for uh, from the, this, um, from the policy advisory board. Uh, from the county, actually. So to increase housing stability of low-income renter households and special populations. So we have like rental assistance, rental uh rehabilitation and housing-related public services. There, you know, when we think about special um, special populations, we have to think about our seniors that sometimes they just need a little help to rehabilitate their home, to make a ramp, you know, to be able to, to widen the bu- the doors so that wheelchair, you know, can get through easily. Um, uh, the other goal is to improve uh public facilities and public infrastructure. Uh, again, that benefit these special needs populations and historically underserved uh people and neighborhoods. Facilitate affordable home ownership, and this is going to be aimed towards not only like low income, but also middle income uh families. Uh, because I think that that's when the thi- one of the issues that we saw, we always think about homeless, low income, but what about the ones that are considered middle income and still struggle? You know, to make a rent payment or to even dream about purchasing a home. Uh, so there will be down payment assistance, new construction of affordable home uh, affordable ownership housing, and again, uh rehabilitation for homes. And the fund supportive services for uh low and middle income and special needs populations. So those are some of the new goals and objectives, but I will share this uh, this PowerPoint with all of you so you could see what's there. And that's the draft. Right now they're taking, um, we are providing feedback and more input until this is a done document.
Okay, great, thanks. City manager report?
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. Just a few things. Uh, the city did hire Central Cultural to help with our twenty forty process to try and bolster our outreach to the Latino community. So that will be kicking off here shortly. Um, annual town meeting was already covered, sister city was already covered. Uh, we have been in contact with federal housing and urban development regarding the grant for uh, regarding our grant for low-income solar panels. Uh, so that process has started. We'll be submitting the paperwork here shortly and uh look at receiving our nine hundred thousand dollars for low-income solar. Uh, the draft economic opportunity analysis has been completed. It's going to be presented to EDC soon. Once that is done and there's comments made, we'll schedule a work session with the city council. Um, building upon councillor Ewing's remarks regarding Ride Connection, Greg Robertson, public works director, and myself, we have been in touch with Ride Connection about the parking of the buses at the senior center. And we're talking with them about an alternative location. Um, and so we're going to be meeting with them, I think, in early October about that. So hopefully that situation at the senior center will improve shortly. Ride Connection has been receptive to that, so thanks to them for collaborating. And then last, uh, the Safe Routes to School grant application was submitted to ODOT last week. Um, notification of successful applicants is expected at the end of September. As we've mentioned before, in some of the preliminary rankings, we ranked very high. The project involves completing sidewalks along the north side of Vadera Avenue between Rose Grove and U Street, actually Pacific, excuse me. Um, and additional construction of a sidewalk and upgraded railroad crossing on Mountain View Lane along the east side. So I think we're applying for one point six million dollars for that. So with that, that's all I have. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. I um, with the MMC, the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium, joined the Transportation Subcommittee uh to work on legislative priorities. So we, the three, there's a small group of mayors from the region or from the metropolitan area. And so the three priorities we wanted the state legislature to hear was that in their transportation plan would be to finish the twenty seventeen projects. We thought it was really important that they said they were going to do it, like those get completed first. Uh, these are in no, I don't think these are in any certain order, but our three top priorities were that they finish the twenty seventeen projects, that they figure out the road usage fee to be able to fund maintenance, and that they keep the fifty, thirty, twenty split formula for state, county, city um funding. So that's what we are sending back to the MMC um and our suggestions for that transportation plan. Uh, W C C C met, uh, so that was on the twelfth. I met with them after school. On the sixteenth, I had Washington County Coordinating Committee. Um, what I would like, I think, just to, I have to pick and choose all those things. But I think um, there was a recommendation to expand Sherwood West for the urban reserve. Um, but the other, the, the other thing I really want to highlight is that on Friday, there's the Transportation Road Show at the Public Service Building in Hillsborough, and that's going to be in the afternoon and then public comments in the evening. So if you want to hear about the, the transportation package, um, you could attend that. The road show is from twelve to two, the panel's two to four, and the public comments five, five thirty to seven P M. And that's uh September twenty-seventh, and that's in Hillsborough. So um, Jim McCully gave a little bit of feedback. So he's our, he works with the League of Oregon Cities. He's a lobbyist with the league. And he was saying that it's really interesting. They've been all over the state doing this transportation show and the communities outside of Portland are supportive of tolling. And then, but in the Portland area, not supportive of tolling. But that's been the, the two main topics that have come up in the Transportation Road Show are tolling and road usage fee. So if you would like to attend, um, that is Friday. So uh, also on the sixteenth, after school, that was during lunch after school, is the mayor, the mayor's plus Washington County chair meeting. Um, they're going to know more about their levies, but the two levies they have coming up is going to be the library levy. And right now they're um aiming for November, the November ballot of twenty twenty-five. They should know the rate that they're going to go for by April possibly. And I could come back and I'll come back and tell you guys as soon as I know. And then public safety, they have more work to do. Um, right, because they also have this tiered, they have another layered portion where they have the jail planning program, right? If they have this goal to expand and do the jail by twenty thirty. So um, they'll have more information, right? Excuse me, I'm taking a drink. I'm going to start coffee. So right now they're in the data gathering, and they'll have that by the first quarter. Jeez Louise, sorry. Okay, so we also got an update with deflection, which is the revision to measure one-ten. I don't know why my throat's all messed up. Okay, my deflection's going pretty good. So far fourteen have been cited. So I think this started September first. Um, fourteen were cited, four cleared the process, two chose the service route. Um, and then ten actually had other warrants or other crimes, so they didn't really qualify for that. The big concern with deflection right now is the lack of funding from the state to, to be able to, you know, carry it out. So they have a hundred and fifty thousand in grant funding, but that, right now, that's what they have left, and that must last until June. So again, it was just one of those funding mechanisms that the state was like, hey, we're going to, you know, fix this measure one-ten. And then, I know, I was like listening to this thinking, when we did our LOC priorities, I probably would have changed my vote maybe on deflection funding. But the other thing I want to talk about is a number of years ago, Metro passed the affordable housing, right, and then also the S H S, the sheltered, the housing services. And so right now Metro, there's been, there's been some talk, but not directly to mayors. Uh, Mayor Beatty from Beaverton tried to ask Lynn from Metro, Metro President, you know, what was going on with this? But there's some rumblings that they're going to try to revise the S H S to take money out of that, like to do affordable housing. The county's position, well, so there's some things that I want to make sure are really clear. The first year of the S H S program, the county had revenue left over. But that is not the case anymore. All of their funds are being spent. And you're, we're seeing that it is working, right? In the city of Forest Grove, the county worked with us to, you know, to house and shelter and close the encampment on forty-seven, right? We have different programs that are working, and all that money is being used. So, but the ca- but Metro wants to take some of that funding and ta- put it back towards affordable housing. So we're not really sure if they're going to do that by, if they do a tax rate change, then that would have to go to the ballot. Um, but we're just really not kind of sure, like, how they're going to go about trying to do this. And there hasn't been a lot of communication from Metro Council to the individual mayors in the, in the area. Um, right now, there's also a six percent decrease in the amount of revenue that the county is receiving. Um, so they're going to have to, like, go into their reserves anyway. But if, you know, if you, I just, I guess what I'm asking this council is if you hear people say like, oh, the county is not doing good with that program. I mean, if that's what you think, then you can, I guess, you can have your opinion about that. But just the, the, the facts are that all that money is being used for um, you know, housing services and H S, S H S. Um, okay, so on last Saturday, I did attend Oktoberfest and I worked the city booth with our communications team. Joyce and Stephanie and Karen came and helped and volunteered for a couple hours. We're really trying to get the engagement for our long-term strategic plan and the twenty forty forward plan. So we, the city of Forest Grove booth will be at Oktoberfest again. Um, if any of you could help come and work the booth for an, even if it's an hour or a half an hour, that would be helpful. Because right now I'm scheduled to do the ATM, just to give remarks at the ATM and then go work that from twelve until seven. So um, if any of you could help, like, us do that portion of getting that out, that would be great. Uh, we still are, need more numbers. Um, we still would like to engage more with the Latinee community, um, the younger community and the older community. So if you can't work the, if you, you know, are busy and can't do it, then if you can get it through your channels, uh, your connections, where you volunteer, where you work, that would be helpful. Um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else. I think that's all I have. And I, I do want to say a shout out to the Chamber, the corn roast. Um, I mean, I, I agree with what Councill, Councillor President Rippey said. I think, you know, in the last two years, the Chamber's done a lot of work in this community, rebuilding trust, revitalizing, re-engaging local business owners. And I thought that the corn roast and the chalk art, I thought that those two organizations working together, there are some changes and some things. It was very, very well attended. It was a successful day in Forest Grove. There were so many people out. I love seeing, like, all the people out, having fun, like, all the dirty chalk hands. I love seeing young kids, you know, creating art next to, like, very seasoned professional artists. Like, I love, like, all the diversity. Um, and I just think that Claudia Hope and Amanda did a really good job. So I want to recognize them, and I want to say thank you to all the volunteers who, you know, councillor Rippey, I think, volunteered at the corn roast. A lot of my students, my MEAC was there, they were chucking corn. So, and I think that next weekend will be another good day to be in the Grove because Oktoberfest is always well-attended and well-received by the community as well. Okay, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.